I'd like to also comment on the great cooperation we get from the city staff. Of course, Police Department is our security and they do a magnificent job. And I, one of them was telling me this is the first time he can remember where there were zero arrests during the week, the weekend. It's truly a family event. We work very hard to keep it that way and they're very helpful. Community Services is with us from the beginning. Fire Department with their inspection program is excellent to work with. And I'll even comment, the Business Tax Division. Now, they probably don't get too many comments, but they've made it helpful steering us through the tax purposes and the rules. I'd like to also introduce our incoming president next year, Laura Nuschafer is here. She'll be, she'll be doing this now with all our support. We're going to take a break. We start our meetings in September, which is just a few months away for next year. We had an extremely successful festival. It made us all feel very good. Thank you.
I was supposed to read something, but I think Lance said it very succinctly, but so I'll jump to the last line here. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present the Strawberry Festival Association with a gift of appreciation and recognition for their tireless efforts in organizing the 2016 Garden Grove Strawberry Festival.
Come on up.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You over there? I saw you.
Yeah, thank you.
A little dusty this year, but.
Good, you're right.
Thank you.
Wonderful. That's a record. Many records broken there. It's good. All right. Just going to move right along into oral communications and this is in conjunction with the other legislative bodies. First, we have Dorit Haro. Is it Dorit Haro?
It's Dorit.
I thought it would be French.
It's actually, it's Hebrew.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Silent T. All right. Thank you.
It's actually, it's Dorit. It's like Doritos.
Okay.
With no Os. So, thank you for the opportunity to address you. I, I have been living here for about a couple of years and I am aware that in April that the council voted to stop using Orange County Animal Control for animal care services. And I have been having a bit of an issue with animal control that I think that we have been very responsible in how we've addressed it, but we have felt that animal control has not been very responsive to us. And so, I just wanted to kind of come here and see if there was any feedback or any advice or any sort of, I guess, support that I could garner. There's been just a number of kind of strange ways that they've handled things, kind of not really wanting to hear our side of the story in terms of the incidents that have been reported, continuing to come several times when we weren't home, even though I called every single time to let them know when we would be home, wanting to declare one of our dogs as potentially dangerous, but taking a year to follow up on it with us. And so, just know, and then, and then when they, I requested a hearing and when they got in touch with me to schedule the hearing, they let me know that they wouldn't be able to do it in the timeline that their code dictates because they have so many people requesting hearings. And so, all of this has just kind of led me to wonder if maybe they are trying to really squeeze in as much as they can before their jurisdiction ends. And it just has kind of left me with a, you know, a bad taste in my mouth. So, I really didn't come here with a specific purpose to get a specific thing, except to maybe kind of put that out there and see if anyone else is giving similar feedback or if there's any, you know, feedback that you guys would have for me.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll, we'll look into it. You know, we have heard, we have heard some things and I've been passing them along to our city manager. You know, we are going through a transition and our Public Works Department and our new animal control that's going to be in the city of Garden Grove is, is going to serve our city very well.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and I'll just add that I've had some communication, email communication with Ms. Harrell and I've explained to her our situation and how she can stay in contact with our office.
Great. Wonderful.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll make sure to promote the, the new number to call so everyone in the city knows that the city is taking over for our own animal control services, animal care services.
And I understand that there's still no decision made about whether any of those cases will be reviewed by Garden Grove's new animal care unit or not?
Yeah, right now, we're, we're still looking at all of them.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. John Holm.
Honorable Mayor, honorable members of the city council, honorable staff, my name is John Holm. My wife and I have been long-term residents, 36 years, and a small business owner here in Garden Grove. I'm going to talk about item number 7F, legal counsel. Start this out by saying that a tsunami is headed our way. The first wave goes by the name of medical marijuana and it carries a unique flavor of brownies and candy aimed specifically at our youth. This wave places the city of Garden Grove between the state and federal government. The state says, "Okay," without funds to correct the consequences, and the federal government says, "No," which forces the marijuana industry into a cash-carry business, consequently a magnet for crime. The second wave goes by the name of recreational marijuana. When used in the privacy of one's residence, the problems are minimal. However, when a marijuana user gets the munchies, they head to the store for more food. Therein lies the problem, automobile accidents. Both the state and the feds expect the slack to be picked up by our city police, for free, of course. And here's the point. Garden Grove needs a strong legal counsel skilled by the tactics of marijuana users and the marijuana lawyers. Our legal counsel is mild-mannered, polite, articulate, and well-dressed. In business, when I need a lawyer, I find the meanest, ugliest, and viciously impolite lawyer that can be found, and of course, with a record of victories before judges. The question before the city council, have you properly vetted your legal counsel?
Thank you. Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. The last council meeting, we had guests from across the ocean. They were here trying to set up a project in our city. Now, the project itself seemed reasonable, but it didn't get anywhere. Unfortunately, we were subject to political grandstanding by two of our council members seeking higher office and it never got to a vote. One of the things that I thought I heard Councilman Bowie say was, "I object to this because the city is not getting a fair share of somebody else's money." That's the way it sounded to me because the funds for this project are being put forth by one of the groups who was here at that meeting. The purpose of the project is to create wealth for our city. And it seems to me that the amount of money generated by these projects is a significant factor in the development of our city. And I would rather see, I'm not a mathematician, but I would rather see us get 50% of something than 100% of nothing. And that's the way it seems to work out. In 1999, I was selected for the Orange County Grand Jury. I was honored to serve as a parliamentarian for that body. And of course, I spent a lot of time reading and rereading Robert's Rules of Order. One of the things about Robert's Rules of Order is a simple motion. Now, there's other terms for it, but the way it's usually phrased is, "Call the question." What that means is, if somebody phrases it that way, they are asking for a second and then for a vote on stopping discussion and going immediately to a vote on the main motion. Now, I would like to see more of that phrase used in this chamber. Insofar as our guests from across the ocean, I thought for a little bit that maybe we owed them an apology, but then I thought, "No. We don't have to apologize for who we are." They were here and witnessed a demonstration of one of the founding principles of our nation, the freedom of speech, and I hope they learned something from it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Are we going to rip the agenda?
Oh, we're hearing public comments right now? For the Housing Authority? We're, we're going to hear all the public comments and then we'll go into that. Is that okay with Commissioner O'Connor?
Sure.
All right. Wonderful. Clay Bach. I don't know if there will be any comments on the Housing Authority, but we're going to listen to everybody.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmen. And I'm here to speak also on the marijuana issue and the pot shops we have here in Garden Grove. And first of all, I wanted to applaud Brea and the Fullerton City Council for refusing to kowtow to big marijuana. And I'm pleased we're all in agreement here on our Garden Grove Council to keep and enforce our ban. I wanted to give you this report, which is the legalization of marijuana in Colorado, the impact. This is definitely information that the big marijuana attorneys we've been hearing from lately do not want you to hear. This report was compiled after a year of legalization from data from 35 different organizations, government and civilian, and it's very little opinion of it in it, is based on a compilation of data. So, please take a look over and I know that we will have a pot shop-free city. THC, couple of details. THC, which is the main minnowing ingredient found in cannabis, in 1960 was 1%. 1983, it was 2%. 1985, it was 5%. And in 2012, it was 15%. And the edibles, which are so prevalent now, have 70 or 98% pure THC. So, 80% of the money, the people coming into the shops, comes from 20% of the users. So, it's not the people who have illnesses or the person who wants to occasionally get high that they want as customers. And if you're, you doubt they are marketing to children, just Google marijuana edibles and see hundreds of products that totally target kids. As John mentioned a few minutes ago, here's a couple of, I just printed off before I came down. This one is Pot Tarts and it's, just looks exactly like Pop-Tarts. Here's a couple of candy bars, Hashes and Ganja Joy, just like Almond Joy and Reese's, and Soda Pops that you can easily purchase. And I'm sure they're available at all the shops here in Garden Grove, even at this time. So, they're marketing to kids. They want kids. Kids are where their money are, is going to come from in the future. So, another thing I learned is 76% of Colorado communities still ban marijuana. So, I'm assuming we will still have the option, no matter which way the vote goes in November. And since we, we're not going to remove the ban, then let's move forward and be sure to enforce it. You know, I was talking to a San Ana police officer last week. He told me that even though they now have illegal shops, there's still approximately 40 illegal ones in the city. So, any money raised is just going to the extra police to police the pot shops. The talk was to put them in industrial areas. Why would our largest businesses and probably paying the most taxes want a pot shop next to them? And I don't know of any industrial areas in Garden Grove that don't have homes and schools nearby. Another point I wanted to make is, I don't think the Great Wolf Complex owners or Nickelodeon would appreciate seeing billboards promoting the Garden Grove as the best place to buy their pot. Here's a couple of pictures that, can't see them very well, but they're from the freeway signs that are off the 55 freeway. This one says, and it's full-blown billboard, "Superstore Legal Marijuana, Pass It On." Here's another one. "Buy Marijuana Legally, 1-800-New Leave." So, I mean, that is what we would have up and down the 22 freeway if we were to legalize them here. And the easiest thing for us to do is get rid of the ones that are here and then make sure that they know that they're not welcome here and then the problem will be solved. Thank you.
Thank you. Winston Covington.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. Again, my name is Winston Covington and I want you guys to know that I come from a long line. My family has come, came to Garden Grove back in the 50s. My dad operated several businesses successfully until he passed away. He owns two, our family owns two commercial properties now on Garden Grove Boulevard with successful businesses. My mom still lives here. My brothers and I grew up here. We provide quality rentals here. So, with a 60-year-plus history, I hope you guys listen to what I've got to say. Now, I'm here also to speak against the medical marijuana dispensaries, I'll call them pot shops. I've lived in San Ana for the last 30 years. We've seen the problems that these businesses have created. From a commercial point of view, I've seen the type of clientele these shops attract. They're not the type, for the most part, you'd want to have as a neighbor. They're not the type that a legitimate businessperson wants to see coming in and around his business. Some of these folks, you might say intimidate their customers. These businesses are losing business. They're moving away. Their residents are losing quality professional services. So, from a commercial point of view, it's a bad thing. Now, I live in the north part of town, right on the border of North Tuscan, Orange. It's a pretty nice neighborhood. I'm the neighborhood chairman. And what I see happening from our point of view, from residential neighbors, is that these folks will come in and buy their pot and they're not going home. They're coming into our neighborhoods. They're parking at the end of our cul-de-sacs. They're smoking their dope right there in their cars. They're having a party. How do I know? Again, I'm the neighborhood chairman. I get the complaints. We talk about it with the police department all the time. I go for walks. I pick up the canisters. This marijuana comes in, many times it's not empty, but then I find the wrappers, the zigzags, I find the pipes, I find the hard liquor bottles, sometimes not empty, I find the beer bottles, the beer cans, the munchies have been talked about. I pick up the fast food trash. I see condoms. I see other things that you don't want your kids to see. And I'm a residential real estate broker. My clients have a duty to disclose anything that's happening in their neighborhood that could alter the opinion of a prudent buyer. If it's a nuisance, we have to disclose it. If it's harmful to the neighborhood, I have to disclose it. I can tell you, it makes a difference on the buyers. I can tell you'll make a difference on property values. Now, San Ana also, you went ahead and put a measure together and they did get an area there that is commercial, where they do have the pot shops. But I can tell you that the revenue that comes in, I have friends just like Clay does that are friends in the San Ana PD, they're clients of mine as well, it barely covers the cost of the law enforcement. Yet, crime is up. These people are actually getting shot that are operating this business. So, the way that I see it, from a residential point of view, it's a no vote. From a commercial point of view, it's a no vote. And all of you need to do the best thing you can for your community and vote no on medical marijuana. You need to keep this city as clean as you possibly can. I grew up here. My family is vested here and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh McIntosh.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, city staff. Aloha, Mr. Bowie. Okay. First off, I'd like to congratulate the city, the Garden Grove Community Foundation, the Historical Society, Garden Grove Downtown Business Association, Garden Grove Neighborhood Association on their work with the city's 60th birthday party. Great job, everyone that contributed, volunteered, and put their hearts into it. Couldn't have been better. I also like to say, good job, Garden Grove Neighborhood Association for the Meet the Chief event on Main Street on June 23rd. And thank you, Chief Elgin, for personally connecting with our residents and being a vocal, visible part of the community. That was great. Now, I haven't ruffled any feathers in a long while, so I'm back. I wanted to address the city's proposed budget and our $3.9 million deficit. As I'm sure everyone in this room and those of you watching at home are aware, we need another 20 to 40 police officers to properly address the crime rates we're experiencing. I attended the last public budget meeting and heard all the same things you heard. It seems to me that we're playing a shell game with the money we have and we only have a couple of very short-term solutions to a long-term problem. I think we've taken a few wrong steps in the past and we're trying hard to correct them now, but it doesn't give us anywhere near the amount of money we need to increase our law enforcement to where it should be at. I have a suggestion and you're not going to like it. Everyone in the next room, you're really not going to like it. I'm proposing that all city staff across the board take a 15% pay cut. Told you you wouldn't like it. I didn't like it either much when it happened to me in 2010, just a few months after I purchased my home in Garden Grove. I was working for a small Garden Grove family business that had been established and in operation here for over 30 years, but when the recession hit, it seriously affected the company. The owner called us all in for a meeting and offered us a deal. You can stay and continue to work here if you'll take a 15% pay cut, or you can leave and take unemployment. Well, I stayed with the company until they went under. I was their last employee that wasn't family. I've never considered myself a wealthy man and I may never be one. However, I know how to tighten my belt when I need to. I drive a 1996 Ford Explorer with an AM/FM radio, a ripped-up headliner. I buy my clothing from the Salvation Army and I still make a monthly mortgage payment of $2,967. I'm not suggesting that the city do anything that I have not done myself. Our city employees make a pretty decent living, especially when compared to the average income of our residents. In fact, I think that some of the salaries can be considered pretty generous. We've turned more than a few people into millionaires. Now, with that said, I'd say we take into consideration the city staff that actually work and live here in the city and kindly reduce theirs to a 10% pay cut. After all, they're paying taxes, utilities, probably buying their groceries and gasoline and other things here. They deserve a break. So, there it is. This would be an opportunity to show how deeply you care for the city that gives you a paycheck, your chance to share the burden that we residents are faced with. This could be the motivator needed to get everyone on board to fight for a better managed financial system. I believe if the problem became your own, if it was driven home through your pocketbooks, you'd feel the urgency and do everything you could to get us back on track to where we should be. It's time to start looking deeper into the contractual bids, the investments, the subsidizing, the pet projects, and especially the retirement packages. We can only push a shell around for so long. On one final note, since I still have time, 4th of July is coming up. I'd like to ask every resident here to make that phone call when you see an illegal firework going off. When your drunken neighbor is shooting a skyrocket out, it's going to go somewhere. The sparks go somewhere. Don't be afraid. Little Jimmy might be a cool guy. You might get along with him great, but if he burns down your house, how are you going to feel? If he burns down your neighbor's house, how are you going to feel? Don't be afraid to do the right thing. Make the call. Report Little Jimmy. Have a good day.
Thank you. Maureen Blackman.
Good evening, Mayor, Council staff. I have a couple of things to say. I want to echo what Josh's comments about the 60th birthday party. First, I'm Maureen Blackman, 38-year resident. I should start downgrading that soon. Great job with Kim Hoy and her staff and Jennifer Nye and her staff and all the hard-working staff members for the 60th. I thought it was a beautiful party. I thought it had something for everything. Vintage cars, the Garden Grove Unified School District and the commissioners, arts commissioners put together an art qualities display for the history of Garden Grove School District. I thought it was beautiful. I hope they can recreate it and keep it out here for a while because it was that noteworthy. I think I saw you watching it for a little bit. It was a cool spot to be into. Many great giveaways in the music. The GGNA had a fun zone, including a prompt-to water park, thanks to Bill Murray and the Public Works Angels that set us up with the hose. Thanks to the Downtown Business Association, Rick Lurma, Jennifer Stewart, and Larry Vance from the Azteca created a fun and festive atmosphere. I thought it was a great, I think it stood firm with the cars' display. Maybe they created a blueprint that we can steal from. I know tonight's agenda has a lot of important issues and I want to mention just a few of them. 7A was continued from last council and not only should it pass, but we should be jumping for joy at the excitement that in perhaps three years, we can echo again what Josh says, the concern about the budget, but if the various projects that are in the queue go through, I think in three years, Garden Grove could be in a, not just a cool, but a pretty financial state. So, I'm definitely in support of that. That's a thumbs up. The question of retaining our acting as a city attorney, I will leave up to the experts, but it does seem that we have a few misses on some legal issues that has cost our city, I'm not sure of money, but emotional turmoil. I think the status of the bar lag employment was a bit questionable, the status of the legality of the mayor-at-large that was presented by the lawsuit by the GGNA. And I would just ask that in all due respect, we take a real close look at, since we've turned over every other rock in the city with city manager, economic development, and other positions, that maybe just in fairness, we should also kick this rock over and see if that's something we want to go with. I appreciate Omar and I think they do a great job, but I think it's been 30 years since we've taken a look and that might not be the worst thing we could do. I, yes, on the 7G for the vehicle, I think council's underpaid. I think that whenever you have a situation where you're underpaid, you find other ways to compensate that. And I don't want Garden Grove to be in that. Maybe they created a blueprint that we can steal from. I know tonight's agenda has a lot of important issues, and I want to mention just a few of them. 7A was continued from last council, and not only should it pass, but we should be jumping for joy at the excitement that in perhaps three years, we can echo again what Josh says, the concern about the budget, but if the various projects that are in the queue go through, I think in three years, Garden Grove could be in a, not just a cool, but a pretty financial state. So I'm definitely in support of that. That's a thumbs up. The question of retaining our acting as a city attorney, I will leave up to the experts, but it does seem that we have a few misses on some legal issues that has cost our city, I'm not sure of money, but emotional turmoil. I think the status of the bar lag employment was a bit questionable, the status of the legality of the mayor-at-large that was presented by the lawsuit by the GGNA. And I would just ask that, in all due respect, we take a real close look at, since we've turned over every other rock in the city, with city manager, economic development, and other positions, that maybe, just in fairness, we should also kick this rock over and see if that's something we want to go with. I appreciate Omar, and I think they do a great job, but I think it's been 30 years since we've taken a look, and that might not be the worst thing we could do. Yes, on the 7G for the vehicle, I think council's underpaid. I think that whenever you have a situation where you're underpaid, you find other ways to compensate that, and I don't want Garden Grove to be in that position. I'd recommend they get a raise, but if they can't, they should get a vehicle stipend. Have a safe and sane fourth. God bless America.
Thank you. Damian Garcia Monroe.
Good evening, Mayor Matt Bonglin, council members. Sorry, I've been in the process of losing my voice. Hi, little city staff. My name is Damian Garcia Monroe, and I'm just here to inform everybody that we're teaming up with some organizations, Orange County Lulac Foundation, with California Walks, and with the Healthy Orange County Alliance, and also working with Michelle Martinez, the one that's running for Orange County Supervisor, at revitalizing and restructuring our streets here in Garden Grove. We know that the city has taken the initiative to start a project already on it, and it's very extensive, and we know it's open for public comment. So we are going to be providing six workshops that we're inviting all the residents of Garden Grove, especially people that are actively walking, pedestrians, cyclists, on how to improve our streets here in Garden Grove, how to work with the city, and how to conduct walk-bike assessments, so on and so forth. Our first workshop is tomorrow, June 29th, at 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM, here at the Community Center, Garden Grove Community Center. The address here, 11300 Stanford Avenue, Garden Grove, California, 92840. So we're inviting everybody to attend, who would like to attend, and so that we can all get involved, make sure that our streets are safe. Unfortunately, we know that in the last five years, we've had five, I believe, five bicycle deaths, about 20 pedestrian deaths, and hundreds of injuries, and many, I'm sure, non-reported accidents with pedestrians and bicyclists. So we encourage everybody to come out. I'm going to have flyers for anybody who's interested. The other dates are July 6th, July 11th, July 23rd, July 25th, and July 26th. We'll probably be back again here next week to remind everybody. And we'd like to thank the council members that are behind getting our streets more safe for everybody. Thank you very, very much. Appreciate it. And everybody have a great, happy July 4th. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to go into item 2A to C. I'll entertain a motion for these consent items.
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Sorry.
Thank you. Any discussion? Please vote. Oh, we need a roll call vote.
Yeah, I have to do a roll call vote. Commissioner Beckles.
Present.
Do you vote A or N?
Oh!
Commissioner Bowie.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Fahn.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Beard.
Yes.
And Chair Wen.
Yes. And looks like we have a public hearing tonight?
We do. We have an adoption of a resolution approving the Garden Grove Housing Authority annual budget for fiscal year 2016-17, and Mr. Wen is here to give the staff report.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. The Section 8 Housing Assistance Program is federally funded through the Department of Housing and Urban Development to assist very low-income families, seniors, and disabled persons in payment of rent on privately-owned rental units. The Garden Grove Housing Authority subsidizes over 2,300 families and administers an additional 300 families from incoming portability. Incoming portability are participants from housing authorities in other jurisdictions who move into Garden Grove. An administrative fee is paid through the Garden Grove Housing Authority to administer these families. All Section 8 rental units are inspected before admissions and annually or biannually to ensure they are decent, safe, and sanitary. Each year, Housing Authority staff performs over 3,700 inspections. We also administer the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. This program is for our current Section 8 participants and is designed to encourage tenant participation in education and career development. In addition, the Housing Authority has assets from a former Garden Grove agency. These assets include land purchased from housing set-aside funds, several homes in the Civic Center area, which are being rented to low- and moderate-income households, and several affordable housing agreements. The rentals and the affordable housing agreements generate a small amount of revenue, which is used for the maintenance and upkeep of those homes, and for operational costs and administering the assets. I will now turn over to Mr. Okiriki to complete the report with additional information.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wen. The next slide here, just speaking about numbers. The Housing Authority is estimated to receive approximately $32.8 million to run all of the housing programs that Mr. Wen outlined. That amount includes approximately $31.1 million for the voucher program and related operating cost, and about $117,000 for the Family Sufficiency Program, an additional $411,000 for the administrative cost for all the programs. And in addition, there's $287,000 included in the proposed budget for managing all the properties owned by the Housing Authority. And with the remaining balance of approximately $877, that concludes our report, and we can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up the public hearing. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak on the matter? Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff?
No.
This time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move adoption of the resolution, accepting the budget.
Just for the city, I turn the resolution that is being adopted is the one in yellow. That is Title Housing 3A, to adopt the proposed budget.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Please vote. Roll call.
Thank you. Commissioner Beckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowie.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Fahn.
Yes.
Vice Chair Beard.
Yes.
And Chair Wen.
Yes. Thank you. There are no items for consideration. Any matters from fellow commissioners? Mr. Stiles? None? Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to adjourn the Housing Authority and take a brief recess.
Oh, it's because of the fat.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
Ending our meeting here, and going to transition directly into successor agency. Director Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call the successor agency to order. Madam Quirk, would you like to call roll?
Member Bowie.
Yes.
Member Wen.
Yes.
Member Fahn.
Yes.
Vice Chair Beard.
Here.
And Chair Jones.
Here. We already did oral communications simultaneously with the other legislative bodies, so we'll go to consent items, just to receive and file the minutes from May 24th and approval of the warrants. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Call to vote.
Member Bowie.
Yes.
Member Wen.
Yes.
Member Fahn.
Yes.
Vice Chair Beard.
Yes.
Chair Jones.
Yes. We have one public hearing item for adoption of the resolution of the annual successor agency budget.
Yes. We have the successor agency proposed 2016-17 budget, and as you know, well, first of all, we do have a balanced budget, and the Garden Grove, serving as successor agency to the old redevelopment agency, has the primary responsibility of managing the recognized obligation payments of the old agency, and also in filing all the required ROPS, which is the recognized obligation payment schedule, filings with the state to get all the approvals to service the legacy obligations of the old agency. And also, you know, has the responsibility for continuing the implementation of all the DDA-approved pursuant to, or following the dissolution of the old agency, including the Brokaw Triangle, the Great Wolf Hotel expansion, and the Side B2. We've also included Site C there, even though Site C is a city-sponsored project that I will talk about later tonight. In terms of budget, the projected revenue for the successor agency is about $20 million. That's essentially everything that is approved in the ROPS for the entire fiscal year. And in terms of uses of this fund, $19.5 million approximately goes to service all the legacy obligations of the agency, and $477,000 is applied towards the operations cost and the overhead associated with executing all those background work to effectuate those legacy projects. And with that, you know, that concludes our report. I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the budget? Seeing none, we'll close. Comments, questions, motion?
I have a question regarding 2548. What are the Limon legal fees?
I'm sorry, yes.
On package number 2548, Limon legal fees in the amount of $1.7 million?
$1.7 million on the, oh, Limon legal fees. That was part of the settlement pursuant to a legal suit that was brought against the agency for the, I think those are the mobile homes that were sitting there where the Great Wolf Lodge is currently sitting. And part of that settlement, and that's coming out of the trust fund anyway to satisfy that obligation, so it is part of the settlement and to resettle some of the folks that were living in those mobile homes.
And for how many years is that payment going to go on?
For the Limon settlement?
Right.
I think that's the one-time payment for that.
Okay.
That settles it.
Great. No further questions?
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Call to vote.
Member Bowie.
Yes.
Member Wen.
Yes.
Member Fahn.
Yes.
Vice Chair Beard.
Yes.
And Chair Jones.
Yes. Thank you. Any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn to Sand District.
Yes. Thank you. Madam Quirk, please call roll.
Member Bowie.
Here.
Member Jones.
Yes.
Member Wen.
Yes.
Vice President Beard.
Here.
And President Fahn.
Here. We've already done oral communications, one consent item, which is to receive and file the minutes from May 24th of 2016.
So move.
Second. Call for a vote, please.
Member Bowie.
Yes.
Member Jones.
Yes.
Member Wen.
Yes.
Vice President Beard.
Yes.
President Fahn.
Yes. Onto public hearings, item 3A.
Item 3A is a report detailing fees to be collected on the tax roll for sewer services outside the city limits, and adoption of a resolution authorizing the collection on the tax roll of fees for sewer service provided by the Garden Grove Sanitary District outside the city limits.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, District Board President and Board members. Item 3A is the annual process that allows the Garden Grove Sanitary District to collect sewer service charges on the property tax roll for those sewer customers that are outside the city limits that do not receive water services from the city. This is a section of the district in the county area near Anaheim and Stanton, just north of Cotella Avenue and the Garden Grove limits. The bulk of the city sewer fees are collected on the city water bills. In order to place these outside-the-city-limit sewer charges on the tax roll, the board must hold a public hearing on whether to approve the list of charges proposed to be collected on the tax roll and adopt a resolution approving the report. Adopting the attached resolution would approve the annual report and authorize the collection on the tax roll of sewer service fees for the property served by the Garden Grove Sanitary District and located outside the city limits. The total number of parcels that these fees apply to is 1,856, and the total amount to be collected is $264,048.17. It is recommended that the Sanitary District Board of Directors conduct a public hearing, adopt the attached resolution approving the report, and authorizing the collection on the tax roll of sewer service fees for the properties served by the Garden Grove Sanitary District and located outside the city limits by four affirmative votes, and direct staff to file the necessary documentation with the county for the collection of the fees on the property tax bills. This concludes staff's report, and we are available for any questions you may have.
Do you have any questions? Seeing none, we'll open up for public hearings. Seeing and hearing none, we'll close public hearings. And Madam Secretary, have we received any protests concerning this proposed assessment?
As of the close of the public hearing, the city clerk's office has received no protests regarding this assessment. There is not a majority... There is not a majority protest.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Do we take all these together, or we gotta do them one by one?
I believe one by one.
One by one.
Okay, I'll move 3A.
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
Member Bowie?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Wen?
Yes.
Vice President Beard?
Yes.
And President Fan?
Yes. Item 3B, please.
Item 3B is a report of delinquent accounts for refuse collection and disposal service bills and adoption of a resolution authorizing imposition of liens on parcels with delinquent accounts. And the Finance Department is here to give the staff report.
Item 3B asks that the Sanitary District Board adopt the attached resolution, adopting the report, and authorizing the imposition of liens for the collection of delinquent refuse collection and disposal fees on the property tax bills. Republic Services bills customers quarterly for refuse collection and solid waste disposal. If a billing remains unpaid for a period of 60 days or more, at the end of the fiscal year, the assessment process may be implemented. The last relevant billing was prepared and mailed in February of this year. All charges remaining on that billing become delinquent May 1st, 2016. 60 days after the delinquency date, the delinquent amount plus the associated 10% penalty may be filed with the county auditor. Payments will be accepted through July 15th, and the remaining balance will be placed on the tax roll. The amount submitted and recorded by parcel would be collected at the same time and in same manner as regular county property taxes. The parcels also become subject to the same penalties and to the same procedure for foreclosure and sale as provided for ordinary county taxes. Prior to the fees becoming a lien against the property, the individual property owner is notified of the delinquent amount and the date and the time of the public hearing. To ensure, to further ensure that all parties are aware of the potential lien, a notice announcing this hearing date was published in the Orange County News, June 8th and June 15th of this year. It is recommended that the Board of Directors conduct a public hearing, adopt the attached resolution authorizing imposition of liens for the collection of delinquent refuse collection and disposal fees by four affirmative votes, and direct staff to file the necessary documentation with the county for the collection of the delinquent fees on the property tax bills. This concludes staff's report, and we are available for any questions.
Do you have any questions? Okay, we'll open up for a public hearing. Hearing and seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And Madam Secretary, any protests regarding this assessment?
As of the close of the public hearing, the City Clerk's Office has received no protests regarding this assessment. There is not a majority protest.
Any further discussion?
I'll move 3B, please.
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
Member Bowie?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Wen?
Yes.
Vice President Beard?
Yes.
President Fan?
Yes. 3C, please.
Item 3C is a report detailing fees to be collected on the tax roll for refuse collection and disposal services in Improvement District Number One and adoption of a resolution authorizing the collection on the tax roll of refuse collection and disposal fees for Improvement District Number One.
Item 3C relates to the Sanitaries District Improvement District Number One. This improvement district is made up of those areas of the city that prior to becoming a subsidiary district of the city in 1997, were formerly in the Midway City Sanitary District. The Midway City Sanitary District collected sanitary service charges by placing them on the tax roll. In order to continue this system, for the convenience of these customers and the waste collector, the Sanitary Board of Directors must each year conduct a public hearing, adopt the attached resolution approving the report, and authorizing the collection on the tax roll of disposal and refuse collection fees in District Number One. The service charge for the standard residential service in District Number One is $19.79 per month or $237.48 per year. The total number of parcels that these fees apply to is 5,695, and the total amount to be collected is $1,365,510. A list of, a list of charges has been prepared and filed with the secretary containing a description of each parcel of real property receiving services for refuse collection and disposal services in Improvement District Number One, and the proposed charges for each parcel. Staff recommends that the Sanitary District Board of Directors conduct a public hearing, adopt the attached resolution approving the report, and authorizing the collection on the tax roll of disposal and refuse collection fees in District Number One by four affirmative votes, and direct staff to file the necessary documentation with the county for the collection of the fees on the property tax bills. This concludes staff's report, and we are available for any questions.
Questions? Open up for public hearings. Seeing hearing none, we'll close public hearing. Any protests on this matter?
As of the close of the public hearing, the City Clerk's Office has received no protests regarding this assessment. There is not majority protest.
Move, move 3C.
Thank you.
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
Member Bowie?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Wen?
Yes.
Vice President Beard?
Yes.
And President Fan?
Yes. Item 3D, please.
Item 3D is an adoption of resolutions approving the Garden Grove Sanitary District annual budget for fiscal year 2016-17 and reappropriating project balances and encumbrances from fiscal year 2015-16. Mr. O'Karecki is here to give this, I'm sorry, Mr. Murray is here to give the agenda report.
I'm not giving that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine. The District Board President, Board Members, with this item, staff is requesting that the Sanitary District Board review the proposed budget and approve the attached resolutions adopting the annual budget of the Gadding Grove Sanitary District. The more detailed our district operational goals for the next fiscal year are outlined in the memo in your packet. A few of them we've highlighted here, and the district staff is here, and he can answer any questions you have in more details relative to the budget goals for the year. The district budget as proposed includes both the sewer and the solid waste. Those are the two entities within the Sanitary District. For the sewer fund, the proposed budget provides the necessary funding to continue to do all the stuff that is outlined in the previous slide. In terms of numbers for sewer, we have a beginning balance, a sizable beginning balance, and the projected revenue for the fiscal year is about $9.5 million for a total of available resources to do sewer-related work of $34.5 million. The uses are outlined there, and total uses there is about $14 million, which leaves, again, about $20 million in balance. And all of that is dedicated for the future capital work of the sewer enterprise, based on the sewer investigations and assessments that was done, I would think way back in 2005. And staff is continually trying to carry out those projects on an annual basis. You can only do so much every year, otherwise you tear up the entire city at one time. So they are systematically working those projects. The other component of the Sanitary District is the solid waste, which is the garbage collection with the contract that we have with Republic Services. In terms of projected revenue, it totals about $2.3 million for the fiscal year. The uses there include in operations, contributions to reserve, and contractual services, services total about $1.96 million with some balance of $472,000 projected to remain at the end of the fiscal year. And with that, that concludes our report for the budget, and we can answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? We'll open up for a public hearing. Seeing hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any other discussion on this matter? I'd entertain a motion, please.
I'll move adoption of the budget.
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
Member Bowie?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Wen?
Yes.
Vice President Beard?
Yes.
And President Fan?
Yes. 3E, please.
For the record, just to make sure, there was a yellow, and that was the resolution reappropriating the project balances, and that was part of the staff recommendation. I wanted to make sure that the motion included that as well.
Oh, it didn't. Do you want?
You want to do it?
Just say 3D.
Yeah, 3D per the yellow.
Okay. Is in addition to, there's a budget resolution, and then the yellow, which is the reappropriation of project funds.
So should we also second then redo it?
You can actually just move the yellow separately if you wish.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. So we'll move the yellow separately in addition to that.
That's the 3D supplement, I'll second that.
Call for a vote again, please.
Member Bowie?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Wen?
Yes.
Vice President Beard?
Yes.
And President Fan?
Yes. 3E, please.
Item 3E is an adoption of a resolution setting the fiscal year 2016-17 Garden Grove Sanitary District appropriations limit, and Mr. O'Karecki is here to give you your staff report.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, Board President, members of the board. Article 13B of the California Constitution, as amended by Proposition 4, began initiative, began limit, initiative, excuse me here, it does, it places an annual limit on the appropriations of tax proceeds that can be made by all levels of government in the state, including the Sanitary District. The annual spending limit is based on the amount of appropriation in fiscal year 1978-79, which is the base year. Subsequent years, spending limits are calculated by adjusting the base year number by an annual population growth factor as well as a cost of living factor. These factors are provided by the State Department of Finance. For cost of living, the growth factor provided this year for fiscal year 2016-17 is 5.37%. And that represents the change in California per capita personal income. The county population growth factor of .99% is also used in the calculation as provided by the State Department of Finance. Now, based on these factors, the calculated fiscal year 2016-17 appropriation limit for the district is about $12.4 million. And within the budget, the total appropriation that is subject to the limit is about $2.4 million. The difference of about $10 million is the gap from which we can make additional appropriations, assuming that you have additional revenues to cover that. Our staff recommends that the board adopt the appropriation limit resolution setting the gun limit for fiscal year 2016-17 at the 12 million, 12,435,737 million dollars. And that concludes my report, and I can answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? We'll open up for public hearings. Seeing hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion?
Move 3E.
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
Member Bowie?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yep.
Member Wen?
Yes.
Vice President Beard?
Yes.
President Fan?
Yes. And items for consideration, 4A, please.
Item 4A is a joint item with the City Council. It's an award of contract to Mamco Inc. for city project number 7405 and sanitary district project number 7834 and 7837, East Garden Grove Storm Drain and Sewer Improvements. And Mr. Murray is here to give the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy. Members of the sanitation district board, tonight the board is being asked to award a contract to Mamco Incorporated for the reconstruction of sewer lines in Nutwood Street, Imperial Avenue, and Central Avenue. Also included in this project is the construction of new storm drain line on Lamson Avenue that will extend east of West Street to Merrill Street and eliminate a deep gutter crossing in Lamson. Additional storm drain work will be done at the intersection of Ranchero Way and a public alley. This work will improve an existing storm drain inlet that has become clogged in the past. The sewer work will include almost 3,700 feet of new vetrified clay pipe ranging from 15 inches down to 8 inches in diameter with associated manholes and pavement repair. Also included is a construction of almost 600 feet of PVC, 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 PVC pipe, which is plastic, and associated manholes and pavement repair. The reconstruction of the sewer lines will help prevent sewer spills and is part of the city's sewer capacity assurance plan, while the new storm drains will help mitigate flood, flooding in the area. Staff received and opened five bids on May 24th of this year and determined that Mamco was the lowest responsible bidder. The winning bid was for almost $1.9 million and is divided with just over $1.6 million going to the sewer work, which is what you're approving. And that will be paid out of sewer funds, and the remaining quarter million dollars will be going to the storm drain work, which will be funded with drainage impact fees, and we'll discuss that under this city council agenda item. Should the board decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can be, begin work in August and should be complete with the storm drain improvements by October. The sewer work will begin after the storm drain work and should be completed by the end of April. These projects were included in this year's capital improvement plan, and there is no impact to the general fund. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Questions?
I'm just glad this is happening. I noticed that area has been flooding for many, many years whenever it rains.
Which area?
Off of Lamson right there by Merrill, right? Yeah, it's, so, since I can remember, actually. I've been in this city since I was a kid.
This will help. It won't solve all of it, though.
No.
No.
Okay, well, I have many more years ahead of me, so.
Any further discussions, colleague? Like to have a motion, please, for this?
Move approval?
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
Member Bowie? Member Bowie?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Wen?
Yes.
Vice President Beard?
Yes.
And President Fan?
Yes. Any other matters from the board? We'll at this time adjourn until our next meeting, which will be on Tuesday, July 26th, at 6:30, right here in the community meeting center. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. We're reconvening City Council right now, and we have consent items for A through, or M.
I'll move the whole thing.
I'll move to approve.
And just a note, Mr. Sandoval? Okay, on 4H and 4I, there's a supplement in the yellow.
It's actually the yellows, this very same documents, but this time they're filled in with the final information.
Thank you. There's been a motion, and?
Two motions.
Two motions?
I'll be the second.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Fan, seconded by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Yes.
And Mayor Wen?
Yes. We have several public hearings tonight. We'll start with 5A.
Item 5A is an adoption of budget resolutions and programs for fiscal year 2016-17, and Mr. O'Karecki is here to give you your presentation.
Thank you. I think before I make, Mr. Styers, the City Manager, would like to make some comments before I start.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I would like to make a few comments specifically about the general fund budget that we're going to be speaking about most of, most of our presentation, and the Finance Director and I are going to take, you know, it's going to take the next hour or so going through most of the information in the budget here that I think is important. And this is really a follow-up to the study session that we had with, with all of you on, on June 8th. We kind of went through some of the preliminary thinking about where we were at with the budget, so this is coming back, taking some of the guidance that you gave us with the final adjustments made to the budget. So I want to say, and I know I talked about this in the study session, but... So, I want to say, and I know I talked about this in the study session, but, you know, that wasn't televised, and for people that might be watching, people that weren't in the study session, we want to first begin by indicating that, you know, we prepared our recommendations here in the budget, focused on the priorities that all of you indicated were important as policy guidance for us. And for the members of the public, those five areas included fiscal sustainability, public safety enhancements, economic development and growth, transparency, and community engagement, and outreach. So those were the five principles that we stayed focused on as we thought through the preparation of the budget that we're presenting to you today. We've got some good news to share with you, and we have some ongoing challenges that we really need to stay focused on. The, Mr. Okereke is going to be indicating to you in a little bit that we're submitting an all-funds budget to the City Council for approximately $236.8 million. About $218.1 million of that is our operating budget, and 18.7 million of that is our capital budget. And we'll go through all of those in depth, in depth throughout the presentation this evening. I want to talk a little bit specifically about our general fund budget, because that's what most people think about, or tend to think about in the budget, that's police and fire and all of the basic other non-enterprise operations that the city works with. The City Council will remember that in the fiscal year 15-16 budget, we had a deficit of $5.6 million. Two million, we were, luckily, the city was able to use $2 million from the Brookhurst Triangle sale to help reduce that deficit in last year's, last year's budget. In our recommended budget that we, suggestions that we gave to you in the June 8 study session, we had a recommendation of budget deficit, budget that had a recommended deficit of $3.9 million. So we, that's part of the good news in that revenue was coming in as we projected. We were seeing the benefits of some of our economic development growth in the city. And so it was a significant reduction from the $5.6 million that we had to the $3.9 million. So, good news to report on that front. As part of our study session, we, I think, we, our recommendation included the addition of three full-time police officers to our complement of 161, raising that to 164. And for members of the public that weren't in that study session, council members gave us additional guidelines to add two additional police officers to that complement for a total of five new police officers that we will be adding, recommending adding in the budget this year. Those would be fully funded positions in addition to fully funding the entire 161 positions that we already have funded in our department for a total complement of 166 fully-staffed positions in the department. That does increase our deficit to approximately $4.27 million. Again, I will indicate that it, it's a reduction from the 5.6 that we started from in the prior years, so that we feel like we are going in the right direction. However, we still have this deficit issue that we need to play, pay close attention to. We are going to be projecting in our recommendations to you that we spend $900,000 from the sale of the, I guess, what we, what has been called the former War Memorial property south of the 22 freeway on Harbor Boulevard to use to help balance our budget in this year's recommended budget. I do want to say that revenue is performing as the Finance Department had hoped it would throughout the year, and we're hoping when we do our final balancing at the end of the year, we'll hopefully see some additional revenue come in that will help us. Expenditures, however, continue to escalate through the, through the, as part of our budget. A lot of that is, are the pension costs that we have for, you know, our employees, and so we have to be mindful of how we balance that out with the revenue that's coming in. Our projected revenues for the coming year for total general fund resources is about $105 million. Our projected expenditures for the year in our base budget is $109 million. Included in the $109 million are supplemental increases that we added to the base budget this year at approximately $3.1 million. I do want to say that we've been able to, in this budget, avoid any layoffs of any of our non-s sworn city staff, who of course provide all the services to the community. We have funded full paramedic staffing for Fire Station 7, which was the one station that didn't have full paramedic, paramedic assessment unit staffing. And so we will now have full staffing in all of our, in all of our fire stations for the coming year. We are adding the five additional police officer positions that I talked about. We are also adding in this budget additional body armor for our police officers, as well as updated tablets for all of our police cruisers, with the idea being that, you know, we want our officers to be efficient in the field, be able to complete reports, download them, and be able to continue the work that they're doing with calls to the community. So those were all recommendations that we worked with the Police Department on. In addition to that, we have a significant amount of funding for street lighting, park maintenance, concrete replacement, basic infrastructure. I will also highlight for the City Council, we are deleting the Public Safety Director position in our budget that was funded for this year and the following fiscal year as well. We are replacing that with an entry-level analyst position that will help us with the addition of two additional council members in the policy research and other things that we think are going to be necessary, primarily to help my Deputy City Manager, Maria Stipe, on the work that she does with all of the council members, and that'll result in a significant savings to the, to the city budget as well. And then there was a number of mandated items in these supplementals that we had to add, and we'll be going over those in a little bit. While it wasn't a supplemental budget increase, I do want to say that the animal care services are included in the base budget, and we factored that in. As you heard me, I think, say on, on June 8th, it's a bit of a tough pill for me to swallow in approving $3.1 million in supplemental appropriations that we're talking about today. But we do have critical needs that can't be overlooked. When I talk about some of our public safety staffing, it was a matter of trying to balance out your wishes to pay attention to the fiscal sustainability of the city while at the same time enhancing our safety services. So we tried to find the right balance to accomplish both of those, going in the right direction with our deficit, while still trying to add some enhanced safety measures to our community. I will say that since the recession, the city has been drawing down our reserves and using one-time sources to balance the budget, and unfortunately, that's, will continue in this budget. We will be using the sale of some city land, as I indicated earlier. We have an employee benefit fund, some development agreement fees, property management lawsuit reserve, workers' comp fund that will be using, taking some small amounts from these funds to, to balance our budget, while still, I think the Finance Director will indicate still leaving us in a, in a safe position financially. And again, as I indicated, we might get a bit more relief if some of our last-minute sales tax revenue comes in a little higher than projected, and that will be used to help reduce the, reduce the deficit as we go. Of course, our budget challenges are with the general fund. Notwithstanding that, we do also have concerns that we have to pay attention to with our enterprise fund, specifically reductions in water consumption are straining our water revenue projections. We are required to do a water rate study at the end of this year, and that will be completed, I would guess, at the end of the year, early in 2017. And the results of that required rate study that we have to do, we'll be bringing that back to you, to the council after the first of the year, with any rate adjustments that are indicated in that study, and council will have the option of weighing in on that more strongly at that time. Other things that we want to pay, that I particularly want to pay attention to in the coming year, and I think our administration does as well, we do want to take a look at what our reserve policies are for the coming year, how that, what we might be thinking about as we go forward. We've talked a little bit about our vehicle replacement fund. One of the things I'd like to do is work with our public services staff to review our fleet management plan, see if we're, if there's any adjustments that need to be made with that plan, and look at allocations to best manage that. So we'll be spending some time with that administratively in the coming year. Cost containment is going to continue to be on my radar, you know, as we look at, at keeping a close eye on the filling of any new positions, and as it projects to revenue as it comes in, we'll be coming back to you with revenue projection updates in the coming year, just as we did during this fiscal year. Couple of comments that I want to make about public safety in particular. I will say that in a couple issues with police and fire, our fire paramedic runs are continuing to increase, so we need to keep a close eye on the work that they're doing with the increasing EMS runs that our fire department has. Staffing for police is always a critical issue, and we're grateful to council for your recommendation of additional police personnel that you directed us in the budget study session. I think that will make a difference. It's something we've had lots of discussions with our police department about. There's been lots of discussions about continuing to increase that number, and we'll be working, I'll be working closely with the chief and the department to think about ways that we continue to enhance the work of our police department in the coming years. As I mentioned before, both of our police and fire department personnel, they've all been doing great work with limited resources that some of our, some of the more affluent cities around us have the, some luxuries that we don't necessarily have. But given all that, they've done a tremendous job with their professionalism and reputation for integrity in doing the work that they do. I will say that the chief mentioned to me that we've recently hired four lateral police officers who have come to us for, from other Orange County cities, so that's a testament to the good work that they are continuing to do. But I think some of these additional positions will give them some much-needed breathing room to provide services to the community. We're at, we, these positions would put us at about, would put us at 166 fully-staffed positions. I would like to get us closer to the 170 mark in the next 12 to 24 months, but of course, that's going to depend if the economy continues to remain strong, if we keep some of our economic development projects on track, that's going to give us the confidence to kind of think through some of these issues. Just a couple more brief comments, and then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Okereke to kind of walk through some of the budget slides. We, as I mentioned before, I do want to have our Finance Department working closely with my office, thinking about going to a two-year budget cycle. It's something that I mentioned that other California cities are starting to go to, Yorba Linda, Riverside, are a couple examples of cities that have really gone to a two-year budget. It, in my opinion, it will allow us to plan a little better, to pair up our budgets with our five-year financial forecasts. I think it will increase some of our fiscal prudence in how we do work. I think, believe it'll help us with decision-making by demanding a little bit longer-term view of how we do budgeting. It promotes budget certainty. It allows flexibility with our department directors, who can potentially save money in year one and use it more strategically in the coming years. And when you do a two-year budget, of course, you have to keep a close eye on budget projections, and the cities that do this, at the mid-year point, they come back to the City Council and give a revenue forecast on how revenues are trending. So you don't, you're not going through the regular role of doing an entire budget process for the second year, but what you are getting is, is really strong data on how the revenue is projecting. If it's trending on track, then that gives us the confidence that year two of the budget is going to be within the guidelines of what we've already approved. And then finally, I just want to say that we have to continue as an organization to keep, keep a close eye on cost recovery when modest fee increases are necessary with some of our, with some of our development fees, our permit fees, our general impact fees, there's a cost to doing business. And while I never want to recommend fee increases that are exorbitant or skewer us out of line with our competitive set cities around us, I do think it's important for us to, to bring forward modest fee increases when that, when that's necessary. I think we talked about it in the study session on June 8th, and in fact, we're working on some fee adjustments that will be coming back to you later on this year as we kind of finalize that. So without having saying anything more, I think, Mr. Okereke, I'll turn the agenda over to you for the slides that you want to go through.
Thank you, Mr. Stiles. Again, good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor. Do have a PowerPoint, which is similar to the details that we shared with you at the workshop on June 8th. But before I get into that, let me just quickly run through, on the agenda 5A, you have the staff memo and all the budget resolutions, which detail the fiscal year proposed 16-17 capital and operations expenditures of the city, and the projected revenues and other fund sources to pay, to pay for them. It also includes, as Mr. Stiles pointed out, the city's basic general fund budget. It also includes water budget, cable services, grant services, capital improvement, and special assessment funds. And we went through each one of those separate funds on June 8th during the budget workshop. So, I'm not necessarily going through those ones one by one today unless you compel me to, we're just going to focus on the basic services budget in the, in the presentation. But one thing I want to point out as well is that it does include the, similar to what you adopted with the sanitary district with respect to the gun limit, there's also a gun limit requirement for the city, and we have that included in here as well. And just to mention, though, the gun limit for the city itself appropriation limit is $136.6 million. And the calculated recommended budget appropriation subject to the gun limit that is included within the budget is only $81.8 million. So we're well, you know, within the legal limits and about $54.8 million below the gun limit. So that's part of the package for you to adopt, once you adopt 5A to approve the budget. It does also include some of the reappropriation, appropriation of fund balances to reserves and reappropriation of project fund balances, as well as encumbrances within that package. So, once you adopt it, as you could see some of the, within 5A, the bullet points there that are sort of delineates all the resolutions that you're being asked to adopt tonight. And with that, you know, just moving on to the presentation. Again, you know, we do have a balanced budget. What we have tonight is sort of a, it's largely a firm-up version of the proposed budget that we'll review with you on June 8th. This works? All right. It works. Just again, trying to- Just again, trying to, before we get into the numbers, just talking about context here. We are a full-service city. We have police, we have fire, we have utilities, water sewer, and solid waste, community services, community development, housing, support services, successor agency. As of 2016, we have 632 full-time employees that work for the city, augmented with 231 part-time employees. We have one police station and seven fire stations all across the city. And I think Mr. Stiles mentioned that each one of those right now have the paramedic capability. In terms of demographics, as of the numbers that we have from 2015, our population is approximately 175,000, and income per capita, it's about $28,000. And unemployment rate, you know, continues to go down. We have very low unemployment rate here. And one of the best things about Gadding Grove is where we're located. We're in central Orange County, and we even have a freeway named after us. So our location is a huge asset for Gadding Grove, and most of the investment that we make along the Harbor Corridor is as a result of our proximity there to Disney. For the context here, in terms of the economy, the reports that we have, the last report that as I mentioned to you at the workshop from May, the job market is slowing down, and some of the reports are below expectations. Unemployment generally within Orange County, about 4.7%, but then you look at labor participation rate, which is very low at 62.2%. One of the things that are happening recently with, it may be, it may have happened across the ocean, you know, with the Brexit, as it's called, Britain exiting the European Union. One of the impacts that, you know, preliminary assessment of that is that it's going to result in strong dollar. So there will be flight to safety, a lot of people will want to come invest in treasuries, so, you know, interest rates will continue to be low, and the actual currency, the dollar will be stronger. But the negative impact of that is that it might affect the level of tourism that we have within Orange County. So foreigners are coming to visit our tourist destinations, it would be more expensive for them to come compared to in the past. So that might affect, in turn, for Gadding Grove, the level of TOT that we get from our hotels. Just wanted to point that out. In terms of inflation, the inflation expectation is changing, you know, with the things happening before last month, everybody thought, well, inflation expectations is virtually non-existent. But one of the impacts of what's happening right now might be, you know, there might be inflation in the, you know, within a couple of years. The economy continues to chug along, you know, it's not any kind of extensive growth that we're seeing. However, you know, there's some talk out there, you know, recession expectations, even though the probability is very low at this time. There are some other concerns that we have in terms of actions at the federal and state level, and we're watching that very closely, especially with some of the allocations for our CDBG funds, the gas tax, and maybe several legislations at the state and federal levels that might end up impacting up, impacting us. And largely maybe some of the unfunded mandates, as we have seen perhaps the impact that it's having on our public safety as a result of some of the legislation at the federal level and at the state level being in conflict with regards to the medical marijuana. There are some city-specific issues, you know, economic development is still bread and butter. Gadding Grove, Harbor Boulevard is still where we get the biggest bang for our bucks. We went through districting, and there will be some impact, the council will be expanding after November. And, you know, fiscal outlook in general is something that I think Mr. Stiles pointed out, we do have a deficit, and we're continuing to monitor that and take that very seriously going forward. This is a chart that I showed you at the workshop, you know, just a 20% chance of maybe a recession in, in the next 12 months. The probability is very low, 20%, but it's still there. Just a little bit of cautious optimism here as we do our budget planning. And again, for the budget, citywide operations, operational budget for 2016-17, it's approximately $218 million compared to the previous year, which the current year actually, because the year ends in a, a couple of days actually, compared to 2009. For capital, proposed budget is $18.7 million compared to 17.8 previously. Within Gadding Grove, our top employers are the healthcare industry, industrial hotels, and big box stores. Good thing for Gadding Grove, we still have an A rating, which is really great for a city of our size, and given our revenue profile and what we've been able to do over the years, I think that's something that we need to maintain, because it allows us, if we ever have to go out and borrow, to borrow at a very reasonable rate. We do have, again, you know, full-size city, you've adopted some of these budgets tonight. You've adopted the housing authority budget, the sewer budget, the solid waste budget, water supply budget we're talking about right now. You also adopted the successor agency budget, and within the context of the general services budget that we're talking about, we'll talk about grant funds, special assessments, and general fund, self-supporting recreation and operational gas tax funds. Okay, let's kind of pivot to next year here. Again, I think we talked about a lot of the issues here. The basic thing, revenue outlook is good. Expenditures are growing a lot more than the revenue growth that we're seeing. And, you know, there's always that struggle in terms of service-level expectations for our citizens and also for our staff versus what we can afford. At the end of the day, we are getting growth, we cannot pretend to be anybody else. Economic base and revenue growth, the driver is still economic development along Harbor Corridor. We're looking at business retention initiatives, neighborhood revitalization, revenue recovery from fees. And again, as a last resort, which come to shove, we'll need to explore some new revenue sources. We don't want to talk about taxes, we don't want to be like our neighbors with sales tax on the ballot yet, but, you know, so long as we manage our budget prudently, we may not get there. And the goal again is to bridge that gap, you know, on just on a short-term basis, and at some point, get away from structural deficit and actually be in the black. Our biggest sources of funds, taxes, hotel tax is going to be our biggest source of revenue in a couple of years. Sales tax, property tax, those are, and motor vehicle taxes, those are big four, that generate a good chunk of our general fund revenues. We also get revenues from impact fees, franchise fees, and user fees for services. And we do rely a lot on grants and subventions to carry out some of our operations within I'm going to skip this slide and go to this one. This outlines our general fund revenue, and I maybe take a couple of minutes to go through revenue projections here. The last column there is 2016-17 revenue projections. We are projecting our sales tax to come in at about $22 million compared to a revised projection of 20.5 in the current fiscal year. Property tax, we're expecting about $14.5 million in, for the new year. Paramedic tax, we're expecting about $8.8 million. And if you look at transit occupancy tax, which is the hotel tax, that's at about $23.5 million. So by next year, hotel tax becomes our single largest source of revenue for the city. And the good thing about that is really, this is one revenue that is made in Gadding Grove and kept in Gadding Grove. Unlike sales tax where, you know, where you just get a small portion of it, or property tax where we get a small portion, everything with regards to hotel tax, we keep what we collect. And with that, we are projecting a total of about $105 million in total revenue for the new year for our basic services fund. And this is a slide that kind of takes it out a few more years. And, and the whole purpose here is to just looking ahead to the year 2021, and applying some growth factors there to our revenues where we think we're going to be at that point. And again, TOT, we think if you stretch it out and all things being equal, the economy continuing to be good, and visitors continuing to come at the level that they are coming and checking into our hotels at the same level, by 2020, TOT hotel tax will probably approximate close to $29 million. And again, you know, by far, are passing any other source of revenue that we have in the city. We'll still get some growth in sales tax as well as in property tax. But with respect to property tax, Gadding Grove is a built-out city. The only gains that we have is just some of the infill renovations or constructions that go on in the city, and also some, you know, sales. You know, those are opportunities to reevaluate property taxes at the sales, sales value. So we're not expecting any kind of significant, too much growth within the property tax. But again, I, you know, not wanting to repeat myself, hotel tax is really a good source of revenue for the city. Uses of the funds that we generate, you know, the primary uses of course is public safety, police and fire, public works to maintain our streets, community buildings and parks and green belts, community services to maintain our parks and put on some recreational programs and services for our citizens. And then some of it is spent on community planning, and a good chunk, again, for municipal support operations. That's essentially where our money go for, to run the city in terms of our programs. And we'll look at the numbers and see what percentage goes where in a little bit. The proposed budget, again, you know, the base load budget includes all of the contractual obligations that we have in terms of cost of living adjustments and all the negotiated labor contracts. It does include the adjustment for our retirement contributions, and, and basically, it's sort of, you know, you can call it a catch-up budget that continues to restore capacity. I know we can't restore it at the level everybody wants, but at least with respect to public safety, we're gradually restoring that capacity to where it's starting to make a difference. And we are adding five police officers and also a significant investment in some non-staff requirements of our public safety operations. Again, we'll go through some of the supplemental requests, you know, some of them that are categorized as mandates, that does essentially meaning things that we have to do, and some of the service augmentations that are included in the, in the budget. It is a deficit, you know, budget that we have to balance with one-time sources, and we'll look at the numbers here shortly. Again, you know, just by numbers, our general purpose revenue is about $102 million. That's operational gas tax money, that about $2 million in self-supporting recreation revenue that is generated that makes up the $105 million that I pointed out in the last revenue slide. So that's your total resources of funds available to fund all of your costs. The basic expenditure budget, it's about $106 million. So it basically, without adding anything, we are about $1.2 million deficit already. This is a manageable deficit if we didn't have to add more to it. And, you know, essentially, within the year, we could spend less, or maybe revenue could come in a little bit more, and that $1.2 million will be, you know, very close to zero, given the size of our budget. But we are adding some necessary stuff. We're adding about $10,000 for some automation equipment. We are also subsidizing our cable operations to ensure that things like this, the council meetings are broadcast with about $438,000 in general fund subsidy for that. We are also spending about $413 in the budget to subsidize the street lighting district. There's also a CDBG subsidy of $123,000. Park maintenance has allocation of $198,000. Concrete replacement, $234,000. These numbers are in thousands. And economic development, we're allocating $250,000 to ensure that city-sponsored economic activities are continuing to go on, because that's really the biggest source of revenue in terms of hotel developments. And then there's a category there of mandates that total $253,000. The other big, other budget request changes, it's about $1.13 million, and I think 920,000 of that is to add five police officers to the budget. So when you add all of that, it totals all the changes or additions to the budget, about $3.1 million. That brings our deficit to $4.279, $4.279 million. And that's where we stand with our structural deficit. And with that, we are looking at one-time sources here to balance that budget. We are looking to realize $900,000 from the sale of the war museum to help throw at the deficit. And there's also the expense reduction of the public safety 3% per offset that will yield approximately $900,000 to draw at it. We are drawing down approximately $600,000 from the Development Agreement Fee Fund, which is a one-time source again. And we have a reserve that we've been carrying in the books for property tax lawsuit that was anticipated maybe 10 years ago that we don't need anymore, so we're going to apply that to reduce the deficit, which leaves about 1.3 or so, 1.34 million. And we are proposing to draw down 1.4 million from the workers' camp fund to help balance the budget. At the workshop, prior to adding the additional police officers, we were estimating about $1 million drawdown from the workers' camp fund. So that's the, the big change in terms of sources of one-time, one-time sources to help balance the budget. And that essentially is our proposed budget in the following numbers. This summarizes it basically the same information in one page here, which again, you're looking at the $105 million total resources, you know, basic expenditure of 106, and the numbers in red, they are 1.2 million is the deficit. And again, outlining everything that we're adding to the budget. To the right of all of that is a total of $3,577, $3.1 million approximately that we are adding as new items to the budget. And then total one-time sources of $4.3 million to help balance it. Going at, in terms of the mandate number, the mandate number there is 253. The details of it is on this slide. We are funding, you know, providing funding for, to support two additional council members. We have to do that. There's also a $133,900 that is being set aside to apply towards the 2000 elections that we're required to do. $26,400, the allocable share of, to the general fund of credit card and e-payment merchant fees. This could go away, because we're planning to come back to you at some point to pass on the credit card fees to the customers. If we do that and you approve, we don't have to spend that $26,000. There's also required affordable care reporting that we need to contract out to ensure that we are compliant with the new affordable care law. And it's a couple of fire metro net dispatch services and not-net fire training augmentation requirements, they are $35,000 and 13, approximately $14,000. Those are the things that Those are the things that make up the mandates and really in this case, we're calling it mandates because these are requirements that we really can't say no to. In terms of, um, again, the details of the changes, you know, the 1.138 million dollars that you saw in that slide, this shows all the details. I think the city manager pointed out earlier that we are deleting the public safety administrator position and that cuts about 183,000 dollars, 184,000 dollars out of the budget. But in order to enhance our support, given the change in the number of council members coming on board after the election, we are proposing to bring in, bring on, um, onboard an administrative analyst to help the deputy city manager with the extensive work that is going on and will be required post-election. We are increasing the bandwidth, internet bandwidth within the city and, uh, uh, community center, uh, and that's about 34,000 dollars. Community services, we have translation and bilingual services, we have the open street and parks master plan, uh, and that totals about 117,000 dollars. For the fire department, we are upgrading three firefighters to firefighter paramedic to ensure that we have coverage in all of our fire stations across the city in terms of paramedic response. And we are deleting about six part-time interns and in their place adding a part-time fire prevention technician. The net impact of all of that is about 35,000 dollars. With regards to police, we are buying additional 40 tablets. These are tablets that go into the squad cars to enhance, um, uh, the police officers' ability to do their job. And that we're also allocating 55,000 dollars for the software related to the card and report management systems and enabling them to run on those tablets while the officers are in squad cars. And, you know, consistent with the, um, direction from council, uh, the June 8th, we've increased the number of officers to five and that's about 900,000 dollars. And we're also adding another 20,000 dollars to the police budget to, for, to provide for tuition and training that they need to have. With community development, there's a, a, a lot of deletion and addition there. I think one of the primary goals is to be able to bring on board a senior building inspector with the right credentials that is required for them to issue certain, um, permit, um, to, to contractors or, you know, that is required within the building industry. And the net impact of that is only 36,000 dollars. So the total of all those changes is about 1.138 million dollars as you saw in the previous And looking at the proposed budget here in relation to the 2015, taking the 2016, um, 17 column versus the 2015, 16 column and, and going through the details of each of the budget, the salaries, um, and benefits group, contractual admin, materials and supplies, internal service funds and the equipment outlay. You can see in terms of the base budget to base budget plus, um, the, um, supplemental appropriations, um, the total increase from one year to the next is approximately 5.7 million dollars. And that's my point earlier that while revenue did grow, expenditures actually grew faster than revenue, which is still why, um, when we looked at it base to base, you know, base budget, you know, we're still maybe, we're still about 1.2 million dollars in deficit. And the biggest chunk of course are salary and benefits and a good chunk of that is as a result of increases in PERS, uh, the retirement contributions and, and the addition of the five police officers. Again, taking, um, just a summary, you know, and, and what percentage that represents, you know, if you focus on the 2016, 17 column, their salaries and benefits is about 75% of our general operations budget. Contractual admin 10.3%, materials and supplies is only about 2%. Debt service and internal service funds about just 12%. Equipment outlay and the other stuff are very small, less than one percentage. And just a little bit of a growth, you know, in terms of, um, the relative percentages of each of those categories when you look at the 15, 2015 and 16 fiscal year as well. This is just a picture view of the same information, you know, just telling you the, um, where we spend the most, most of our money. Running a city is a people intensive business. People are the ones that make a difference, you know, the police officers, firefighters and all the staff. And we looked at, again, the basic services salary and benefits by department. Again, you know, there's nothing, um, unusual here. This is really where most cities spend the, you know, the most of their money. Salaries and bonuses, 53% of that is for police, 23% for fire, 9% for public works and then you have about 4% for community services. And those four departments are really the frontline business of, of the city. The rest of the other one, human resources, information, finance, city manager, really support functions to keep things going. Again, the same information, but just looking at it in a, um, in a pie chart. And, um, you know, we looked at, um, the, you know, current budget, proposed budget by department, similar to the salaries, again, the distribution is what's presented there. And, um, to the next slide, I, you know, we showed the same information by picture in terms of total budget, you know, how it's distributed between all the departments and programs. And again, police is about 47, fire 21%, public works 14%, community services about 5%, economic development 7% and everybody else is maybe one or 2% down the line. Summary remarks again, you know, this is a restrained catch-up budget. It includes the impact of all the negotiated salary adjustments and, you know, it's catch-up in the sense that, you know, it includes some additional public, public safety personnel and, and other investments to, to enhance operations. We're using one time funds to balance, which, you know, at some point we want to get away from that. With all of that, the projected year end balance is about 61,000 dollars. And I need to also point out, you know, we have all the expenditures and commitments, you know, that has gone on during the fiscal year. We are committed to building a new fire station, fire station six, and also doing some significant renovations to the, uh, uh, police station. And, you know, a while back, if you remember, you also approved a plan to acquire the police and fire hot raid radios and the backbone, which is about 4.6 million dollars. The new fire station will probably about 5 million, um, police renovations and all of that stuff, maybe somewhere close to a million dollars. And, um, so we're spending in addition to the budget, this is outside of the budget, we're spending capital funds of about 12 million dollars to ensure that, you know, we provide the right infrastructure for public safety, you know, in terms of fire stations and police renovations and also, um, the equipment that they need in terms of the radios and the backbone. And one of the things that we have done in this budget, because spending 4.6 million dollars in one chunk, you know, for a city of our size, that's significant. So we are going to start to create a similar to our vehicle fund, another internal service fund where we can suck away money periodically so that 10 years from now, I don't know, five, 10 years from now, when that bill comes up again, because technology do change. And the next time we, we change the backbone, right now it's 4.6 million dollars, the next time it could be eight. So at least if we start to suck away money depreciated and set aside money on our new bases, we'll be, you know, well along our way to at least not have a huge shock where we have to replace the, you know, that kind of equipment. The other component again is PERS, you know, rates keep going up and, um, but, you know, it is what it is, you know, based on, you know, the contracts that we have. But the new hires that are in the restructured PERS contract, eventually I'm thinking maybe five years, 10 years from now, we will start to see, you know, the impact of that in terms of reduced contribution rates for, for, for the city. On the revenue side, um, the economic recovery is continuing, but some concerns, again, I did point out what's going on across the ocean there might end up impacting us here in terms of tourism and, you know, hotel revenue. Those are the things that I will, will continue to monitor going forward and hopefully when we come back to give you an update in terms of mid-year report, we will update you on how revenue is coming in. We need to continue to explore revenue growth opportunities, particularly bringing home all the development that we have pending along the harbor corridor. Those are projects, if all of them are completed, they will add significant amounts of money to our general fund budget and also enable the city to do some things in the community, in terms of investing back into the community. So there's a lot of major generating, revenue generating projects in the works. And looking ahead, um, the last word for me is to eliminate that structural deficit, you know, sooner than later. And with that, um, we can answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, let me just add just a couple little final thoughts. One is I want to make sure I share with all of you just how impressed I continue to be with the dedication of all of the city staff. You know, in my time here, we have just a, a, a group of staff people that are very dedicated to the city of Garden Grove, very committed to the city, will do whatever is necessary to make great things happen in this city. You know, I'm just very bullish on the future of this city and I'm grateful for the employees that we have. And so, you know, I think we should all be very proud of the team of people that we have working for us. And with that, that concludes our presentation and certainly myself, Kingsley, any of our department directors were available for any questions that you might have.
Any questions, colleagues?
Sure. Thank you. Just one topic for discussion, Scott, you touched on it, Kingsley, you touched on it as well, but just, um, when it comes to the various reserves, right? I mean, we have reserves for vehicle replacement, reserves for a number of different things, but I don't believe we have a, or at least we don't have a clear understanding of how those are defined. I don't know that we have a clear capital reserves policy in place. And that's something that I think we should, we could all benefit from having a better education on our side of the counter on that one. I think our, it would help a lot with labor relations as well, with whatever, if we just had sort of a more clear picture of how we allocate funds into various reserve funds and, um, you know, to make sure we're not putting too much in reserves, but also to make sure we have adequate funds and reserves as well. I don't believe we have any particular emergency fund, that would be a prudent thing to do. It's a, not a fun thing to talk about when we've got a deficit to try and figure out how we're going to establish a emergency fund on top of everything else. But we should have an adult discussion about all that so that we make sure we have maybe some comparison across other agencies in terms of how funds are allocated into reserves so that we're sort of on par with whatever standards exist in terms of how that goes. But I would just like to do a deeper dive into creating a reserves policy and maybe that's something we could bring back at a later date to, as a, as a deep dive on that one particular topic, just so that we have a more clarity, more transparency throughout all the departments about how that works.
Councilman, if I could just add on your comments and I may turn to Mr. Okereke for any comments he might have as well. When you're talking about reserve policies with cities, you know, a lot of cities do it differently. I know I've talked to some of my colleagues here in Orange County, some, a couple of them said that are in, you know, they're, they've got some budget challenges, they just haven't been able to actually put a reserve policy in place. We don't have one, some cities do. They might have working capital reserves, they might have a mandate to always have six months of payroll in place, that sort of thing. We did, when we worked with management partners on our management system review, we committed to doing some benchmark follow-up with them at very minimal cost to be managed through my office to do some benchmarking in that area. And that's something that, you know, I want to talk to, uh, Kingsley and I will be talking to them more about just giving some thought to that. Maybe it doesn't make sense in our city, maybe it does. We have done a lot of great things right over the years here. We've got some, we've got some strong reserves that are really carrying us. We're not sitting here tonight talking about doing sales tax increases and everything like we've heard in some, you know, some other cities that are just, you know, we all have different challenges. We're also not the most affluent of cities compared to some of our other cities here in Orange County. So it's a little different for all of us, but it's something we want to just, you know, do a, do a little review on. It may ultimately prove to not be the right thing for us to do, but I would like to come back to you at some point, just have a conversation about it. And Kingsley, I don't know if you have any thoughts as well?
No, I, I totally agree. I think, you know, general and broader understanding of what we do, you know, if we need to have this, you know, say contingency reserve per se versus, you know, some of the, what we've done in the past is if we know of an obligation and we know it's coming, we set aside money for it and plan ahead. So, yeah, I, I think I totally agree that sort of a deep dive into it for broader understanding of everybody would be great.
Just add on one thing, I have two examples from other agencies I've worked with that were kind of interesting. So, um, Orange County Sanitation District, which operates a very complex engineering machine in those, in terms of those facilities that they operate and whatnot, right? So it's large dollars compared to our dollars and very complicated systems and construction or whatever that they're constantly doing. But within the last year, they went through and did this dive into their capital reserves programs and actually found excess money that they were able to take out of reserves and use to pay down debt. And that was a great story to report out with and say, yeah, we, we kind of figured out that we did a stress test on our reserves and we didn't need all those reserves and so we're going to use it to pay down debt. Great story. Not that we're in that position, but I mean, that's, you know what I mean, it's, and I, I don't know exactly how we stand up compared to healthy agencies of comparable size or whatever. And I think that would be what we'd want to benchmark is not the ones that are struggling to raise in taxes, but maybe other ones that are similar size but have, don't have a deficit and sort of have maybe some of these things in place in a prudent manner. The other example was OCTA. So OCTA obviously has, among other things, buses, a fleet of buses. And during the downturn, bus ridership went down, revenues went down and there was a decision made to try and pull some funds out of their bus replacement funds. So we did that by saying, or the board did that prior to me being on it, by changing the useful life of a bus from 12 years to 14 years. It just sort of stretched it out and says, okay, you don't need as much money so you can kind of steal a little bit of money out of that fund and use it in other places. So that was done and then that sort of got that organization through the downturn and then at some point we realized that we saw dramatic increase in vehicle maintenance costs as a result of keeping vehicles for a longer useful life. And so there was a subsequent decision, once things got a little more healthy again, to revert back to 12 years and then ultimately to buy some buses at the appropriate time when funds were available to do it. So it's been fun being a part of certain processes where we kind of dove into stress testing, capital reserves and playing with those numbers and just making sure we've got a good handle on how things go. And I don't have a good hand, I'm a finance guy and I don't have a good handle on exactly how we appropriate funds into these. how we appropriate funds into these various reserves. So I'd like to learn more about it. I think the public would too, and I think our, it would, like I said, it would go a long way in terms of, um, adding transparency and just sort of a sense of cooperation amongst our various departments and labor, labor groups.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have just a quick question. You mentioned a two-year budget, when would you consider implementing that?
Councilman, I think, uh, you know, it's going to take a little bit of education over the next six months. What I'd like to do is, you know, spend some time, you know, working on the process. Obviously, we're going to have, uh, also some new council members that will come on at the, uh, you know, in, in November. So, you know, my thought would be we would do some, you know, maybe educational discussions, maybe I'd have one or two times on the calendar to talk about maybe how some other cities have done it. And, um, you know, I personally think if we could, you know, go to a two-year budget one year from now, that would be a, it'd be a good thing. You'd have a new council that would be six months, you know, into their turn. Uh, they would be starting off fresh. Um, it's a, you know, it's a, I think the timing might be good to do that. It'd be a good opportunity to think a little more long-term, uh, for the entire council and for the city staff ourselves. So, um, that's kind of what I'm thinking, but obviously we want to, you know, work through all of you and, um, you know, we don't want to do anything that people are not comfortable with as well, so.
Okay, so potentially next budget cycle.
Maybe.
We can consider it. Uh, grants, are we looking into grants continually? Any, any, anything on the horizon for grant monies coming in? Revenue enhancement through, uh, other levels of government, uh, any particular specialty grants out there? Or do we always continue to look at that?
The one, uh, the, the one area, um, Mr. Murray was the person that, uh, I was looking at, he's right behind me, but I know his department has done a very nice job over the years of scouting out infrastructure grants that, uh, you know, are helping our community. Uh, I know we've done some, uh, interesting things with soliciting grants for bike transportation studies and some, um, um, some planning efforts that we're involved in. So, you know, we're continually, you know, trying to stay connected to our networks, trying to figure out what opportunities are out there, which ones make sense for us. It's, um, you know, it's a big part of, of the services that we provide and, um, so we, you know, you know, we need to continue to do that. I was just talking, uh, the mayor and I were at the, um, at a, at a presentation of some money to the OC Food Bank today, and I was talking to the folks from the Community Action Partnership who reminded me of some of the grant money that they provided to us for some of our exercise equipment in our parks. I know they're doing a, um, a walking path around East Gate Park that I think will be started. So, you know, it's just a good example of, you know, partnerships of how we're trying to do things.
Okay, we talked about a new, adding a new admin analyst position, would that have some role in perhaps pursuing grants?
Uh, it's absolutely, that person could be involved in doing that, especially as it relates to some of the things that, uh, the council might want to pursue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I, sure, I'm sorry. Can I just add on to that and just say, um, I would say that we've come a long way even just in the last several years, I think, on that front in terms of tapping into various grant opportunities. And we've found certain pockets of activities, like you said, with active transportation and open streets and all things, um, kind of bicycling, whatever. So there's a lot of money out there in certain realms with health and with connectivity and, um, whatnot. I think we're doing a good job of getting up to speed on that, but certainly there's probably more ground out there that we could, uh, we could cover in the future.
I guess my question is really more towards Mr. Okureki. When do you see our city being in the black? Because it looks like in the presentation, we're emphasizing a lot on the TOT. And the difference between our projection this year and last year is four million dollars. And we are still operating in a structural deficit and we're pulling from a lot of different funds here. These are what we're calling one-time pulls. It looks like we're going to do this again because in the future, if we continue to operate this way, because the estimate for 2017, 2018 is 25 million compared to 23.5. And when we look down the line at 2020, 21, we're looking at 29 million. Do you see us going into the black? I'm trying to see a chart, a trajectory, and it, I don't think it looks good.
Well, uh, if I can respond, um, I don't think it's rosy, you know, honestly, but I think, you know, we're going in the right direction. You know, it's a two-edge, um, sort here, um, you have to grow revenue and also cost containment, like we've said in the past, you know? If cost continues to escalate at a rate that is higher than your revenue growth, you'll continue to have that imbalance, you know? And, um, we have, um, you know, um, incorporated some assumptions here with respect to the hotel, uh, uh, growth. But we do have some significant projects out there that, some of which we have not included here, you know? We're, in, in terms of, you know, there's no, nothing here that says, you know, that, um, uh, the B2 site will be in place. You know, if that happens, you know, these numbers could be significantly more. And if you look at, uh, where 2016 and look at, uh, 2020, that's four years out, or five years out, this, some of those projects could come alive and infuse some additional, um, uh, revenue into, um, you know, into our coffers. The other component of the revenue here that, uh, we've kind of been, uh, looking at as well is, um, with the agency, as some of the rubs obligations are paid off, there will be money left over within the, um, trust fund. And the city does get, um, 11% out of what they call residual property tax after those rubs are paid off. So, you know, as things fall off by 2020 and some of them to 2018, so all of that money will be available for the city to get its 11% share as a taxing entity within the county. So we could see some bump in our, uh, property tax revenues. But, yeah, you know, I'm, in a, I'm in a way agreeing with you. If, uh, if expenditures continue to grow at the clip with, that they are growing over the past few years, it would be a tough, uh, uh, it would be tough to see when we get into that black. Um, but I, I am cautiously optimistic that in, you know, if things go the way it's projected to go with all the developments along Harbor Corridor and, uh, cost containment efforts, we'll get there.
What year do you estimate we'll get there?
Well, um, you know, by 2020, you know, and, and this is not a prediction here, this is just a projection.
Sure, based on the numbers that we currently have.
Yeah, based on the numbers that I'm, I'm looking at here, uh, maybe sometime around then, you know, we could possibly. And, and the caveat there is how much will expenditures grow, you know? And, um, I, I know that if we want to in- increase expenditures and we want to, um, increase, uh, police protection to the point where, you know, we've been talking about adding maybe, uh, 10, 20 police officers, the revenue growth projections that we're looking at here will not do it. We need to look at alternative source of revenue in order to accomplish that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I could just, uh, tag on to the back of that a couple of things. We've talked a lot about development on Harbor Boulevard. Um, you know, one of the other areas we're trying to give, you know, we're trying to give some attention to a lot of different areas all throughout the city where I think significant economic development growth can occur. Um, all of you have gotten a chance to work with Lisa Kim, our new Economic and Community Development Director, who's really immersed herself in our community. Uh, she and I have had lots of conversations about, um, the potential growth and revenue growth, uh, in the Little Saigon neighborhood and where, how we can take that to the next level, lots of opportunities there. Um, I've had conversations particularly with Councilman Beard about, uh, the Valley View Corridor and what's going on there, and we're hoping to make some additional things happening there, happen there in the coming year. Um, let me just say, we could not, we wouldn't have to approve any of our supplemental agreements. It was 3.1 million dollars in supplemental agreements. And as Kingsley showed you earlier in the budget presentations, you know, our deficit really could be 1.1 million dollars if we didn't approve any of the deficits. But then we're saying we're not making any public safety enhancements, we're not hiring any police officers, we're not making any of the fire department enhancements that we'd like to do, some of the other IT technology things. So that was kind of the balance that we were trying to do, but we could have not approved any of those supplementals, um, you know, in, in our opinion, and I think in your opinion, it was probably not the right thing to do, especially right now given our situation. But, you know, we did be at a deficit of 1.1 million dollars and we could do that for a couple of years and we'd be at structural balance next year probably if we wanted to. But, uh, we're also then taking a risk with some of our, uh, public safety needs and some other things that we think are important to do. So, you know, that's the balance you have. Um, you know, economic development is the third stool of that. It's not just, it's trying to be fiscally smart about this, it's trying to, you know, add to some of our public safety needs, it's trying to build upon our economic development. We're, we're trying to do a little bit of all of those things.
Sure, can you give me one second? Go ahead.
Okay. With this.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Are we okay?
Okay.
Are we okay now?
Yes.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I am seeing that since many, many years, especially if I look back from 2012, we rely heavily on the TOT tax. In 2012, we passed, the city, the resident passed the measure Y, where we increased the TOT tax, which is a hotel bed tax, uh, by one and a half percent. And that was estimated at a time that will give the city an additional one and a half million dollar to the general funds to help reduce the deficit and to help pay for, uh, public safety resources, you know, buyer prices and, and et cetera. Now, fast forward, we had the, uh, in, uh, 2016, we had the grand opening of the watermark, water park resort, and that was hopefully bring us some more revenue. But the way I see it is now, every single year, we add that the cost for our city, it increased by a few million dollars and it always ahead of the revenue, the additional revenue that, that we bring in. So if we look at this and moving forward and project it to 2020, that we hope, you know, by that time we have a few more, you know, big hotel that bring in the, the money that we need. So between next year and the year after, the next four years, if we keep eroding a few million dollars each year, how do we get the money to, to pay for the services? Now, these years, we are look, we are tapping into the sales of the, the World Museum that bring us about $900,000. We tap into the, uh, vehicle, um, maintenance fund to help balance the budget. What do we do for next year? We cannot tap into another land sales. Uh, we can no longer tap into the vehicle, um, you know, funds. So how do we balance the, the budget without severe cuts? Uh, can, can Mr., you know, can Kingsley and, and you Scott comment on that?
Uh, Councilman, yes, just a couple of comments from my standpoint. Um, we, we really need, in my opinion, and, you know, I know we're talking about a couple of projects on, on, again, on Harbor Boulevard, but I think when you look at the cumulative effect of where some of the growth can occur all throughout the city, I think if we pursue that economic development strategy, it can have, um, you know, even a stronger effect than, you know, just saying, well, there's a couple hotels out there and we might get one or two million from each one of those. But we've got an entire city that we're trying to grow the economy at and, you know, in small wins here and there, it's really important. And, um, Councilman, I know, you know, when you're talking about measure Y, measure M, uh, when that was approved back then, uh, it really did help bring some additional revenue to the city. And, you know, what I would say is, uh, and Kingsley can correct me if I'm wrong, um, you know, as our expenses have grown in the city, a lot of our public safety expenses have, have grown the most. And, uh, I would say most of that revenue over the years has gone to public safety to kind of help support those services. So on occasion, you know, you know, I'll hear people who will be concerned about, you know, how some of our development on Harvard, uh, on Harbor Boulevard, you know, helps the city. And that's one clear way where some of our revenue that's come in has really helped us by, by driving, you know, the revenue that we brings, bring in helps to pay for those services that we need. And, um, Kingsley, I don't know if you have...
No, I, I concur with, uh, what you just said, uh, you know, um, it, it goes beyond the hotels on Harbor. Granted, um, you know, Harbor is the low-hanging fruit and, uh, that's where we get the biggest bang for our bucks. And, uh, we'll, we need to continue to pursue that. Uh, you know, it generates a significant amount of revenue, but we need to explore other areas of the city to, you know, see if, um, you know, that expansion of that economic base yields some fruit for us in terms of new revenue. Um, the other point here, I think I made it earlier and, and Mr. Stiles also pointed to it, is that our expenditures are growing faster than our revenue. Granted, when we passed measure Y and increased the TOT, um, rates, most of those revenue, as you rightly pointed out, went to support our increases in public safety. And the public safety components of our budget have been the fastest growing component of the budget. And, um, and we realize that, uh, you know, uh, public safety is a significant part of the city operations, it's critical, we need a safe and sound city in order for people to live here and do business here. So a significant chunk of our budget is being allocated to that. And, and that growth has been in public safety, uh, in the past, um, I would say 10 years that, uh, you know, we've been looking at this.
Just to be clear, there's, there's no balancing measure that's tapping into a vehicle replacement fund?
Uh, not in this proposal.
You're right.
Yeah.
We're seeing it from the land sale, from the former War Museum.
Right.
Idea.
Right.
A public safety 3% purse offset, a development agreement fee fund.
Yeah.
Property tax lawsuit reserve and a draw from the workers' comp fund.
Right.
So this, I, I'm curious, the draw from the workers' comp fund is a 1.4 million dollars.
Right.
How much do we actually spend from that fund annually on average?
On the average on that fund, um, let me look at, um, our financial statement here, give me a second. And if you, um, workers' comp fund, we are self-insured for workers' comp for the first $1 million. And, uh, in excess of $1 million, we buy insurance for that. So if somebody's on workers' comp, um, for the first $1 million, the city is responsible, responsible for it. That's, think about it as a deductible that we have to come up with. So most of the claims that we have is less than a million dollars. So what we do is, uh, we hire an actuarist to look at our workers' comp, um, uh, management of our workers' comp fund every other year. So they come up with, um, a statistical analysis that tells us that you need to fund at this confidence level and, um, you know, uh, uh, based on this confidence level depending on where you want to be. you want to be, you need to have this kind of amount of money in reserves. And that's how we operate the fund. Essentially, we're serving as our own insurance company for that first $1 million. So, on the average, if you look at that particular fund, that fund pays out, I'm looking at, for the fiscal year ended June 30, we took in, because what, the way the charges are attributed here is that every employee of the city, whether you work for city, and you're a police officer, or fire officer, or you work for sanitary district, or the housing, you know, there's a computation that we go through to say, we are going to charge each fund for, you know, a determined amount of money, so we can put it in this fund. Sort of, think about it as your premium payment for that, for that policy. So all of it is accumulated in this fund from general fund, from water, sewer, garbage, housing, and all of that. For that fiscal year ended, we took in about $6 million into that fund. But the fund, total expenses, the fund paid out about $7.2 million. So for last year, the fund had a loss. But, because some years, you know, it would have sort of a residual, you know, we don't necessarily call it profit, but it's a residual that goes into the balance for that, within that fund. And every year, there is a, an analysis by, that is done by our financial auditors to look at all the outstanding workers' comp claim. And workers' comp is such that it's not the kind of claim like liability where it ends. Workers' comp, in the language of risk management, has a very long tail. Somebody can be on workers' comp and leave for another 70 years and still claiming.
Right.
So you need...
Right, we've seen some of those lawsuits.
Yeah, so that's, on average, you said the fund spends maybe $5, $6 million a year. If that, I'm not sure if that answers your question, that's a long about, but that's the nature of the workers' comp fund. The bottom line, though, we're recommending here that we can draw down $1.4 million out of that fund, and in my own professional opinion, based on the balances we have in the fund, it will not jeopardize the integrity of that fund, which is why, which is why we're recommending it.
Okay, and do you see that we might be doing that again, next year, or in the future?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say no, you know, potentially, you know, so long as we're going in the right direction. Like last year, as Mr. Styles pointed out, when you look at our budget last year when we adopted, the deficit was, you know, $5. something million, close to $6 million, and, you know, it's going in the right direction. And I personally would like to see it going into that, you know, that right direction until we get to zero.
Sure.
At some point.
Sure. I just think it's really important that everyone sees this transparently and understands that we are in trouble. And I know that the city staff and our vision is to continue to develop on Harbor, but based on the numbers alone, I don't see us going into a block anytime soon. So, I think, you know, we have to think very carefully and really take a look at economic development seriously, and not just focus on Harbor. You know, the deals that we make, you know, for example, the deal that was in front of us last minute, that we had an extra couple of weeks to see, that we will be voting on later, was signed in 2013, but I think it would be different if it was signed today, considering the market today, you know, along Harbor Boulevard for resorts and hotels. So, I know that when the voters voted to increase the TOT, it wasn't just an expectation of public safety, it was an expectation that there would be other services as well. And right now, we're seeing our budget, you know, cut into other funds, and that's a concern. So I think we, I mean, this, this is great, you know, we did the numbers well, reduced the structural deficit, but we need to look into the future, not just a couple of years down the line, but we also need to look at, how are we going about spending? How are we going about negotiations with our employee groups? How are we going about maintaining, and maintaining our, the things that we need to maintain, like our roads, and the cost to the vehicle replacements, and technology, and all those things that we've talked about. So to me, it's a bigger picture. I'm just a little concerned. So, but this, this is, this is good, because I know that the reason why we did put forward adding those two additional police officers is because that is our priority, and we need that. But I think when we compare ourselves, though, to other cities, whether it's to a neighboring city that's doing worse, or another city in the county that's doing so much better, I think we, we do a disservice to ourselves when we, when we make those comparisons. I think when we look at our city, it's really about our own financial health, and it really is not about comparing ourselves to other cities. It's not only what we need, but what we can do. So, that's my two cents. And also, I noticed that some folks were taking pictures of the presentations, we do have some of these available right there with our clerk.
We have some copies...
There are copies right here with Ms. Palmeroy.
Posted tomorrow.
Yeah, and I think Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, the clerks, we'll work the clerk's office to have this online...
Okay, great.
... tomorrow, if it's not already up there.
Great, thank you. Okay, any more questions on this?
Well, I also want to commend the staff for their work and performance in putting this together. We're talking about literally hundreds of line items you go through, and there's a lot of involvement, and there's a lot of give and take. We talk about a balanced budget, well, that's what it is, it's a balancing of the priorities, the needs. It comes to us policymakers to make those decisions. I mean, we're in a direction for public safety, and I think we're headed in the right direction with that. There's no easy answers or quick solutions, but I think a steady course, we're taking the right course. We're looking at divesting more, less, and focusing on the opportunities we have, but also expanding those opportunities in other portions of the cities. We've had several discussions, the city manager and I, we know of different locations in all our areas where we can make improvements. Little Saigon comes to mind, so we're working in that, with that goal, in that direction of growing our economy. Most of our costs are fixed with personnel, I mean, 80 to 90 percent. We have such discretionary, it's our choice, the positionings, the staffing, it depends on the level of service that we want to provide, and our concentration right now is public safety. So I think we're doing the best we can at the moment, but with, looking to the future, as was mentioned here, to keep a balanced budget, to keep our structural deficit low, which we could have, we were very close this last time, so that was a good thing, but we also have mandates to consider. So, overall, I'm encouraged by this. I think going forward, we'll have some more constructive projects in the pipeline, more sales tax coming in, and I'm cautiously optimistic like our staff here. But with that, I'm pleased with the budget that was put together. I think, I'd like to go to a two-year budget, see how it works out over the next couple of years, this year at least. We have new council coming on board, so we are taking care of some critical needs at this point. So, again, my kudos and compliments to the staff for putting this together. It's difficult, stressful, it's competing, different departments, but I think we came out well, as best we could at this time. So again, thank you for doing, putting this together.
And Councilman, thank you for reminding me of that. I do want to also join you in thanking Mr. Okereke, all the members of the finance and budget staff, some of whom are sitting in the back of the room there. A lot of work goes into putting this together, lots of documents, lots of analysis, lots of coordination with all of our departments, so I want to join you in thanking them as well.
I'll echo, I'll echo that gratitude to all of our staff, and especially Mr. Okereke for leading your team, and Mr. Styles for coordinating and bringing everybody together. It is, it is a very difficult task, and I just think that it's really important, at the same time, to be reflective of our own city, and not necessarily, you know, comparing ourselves to others, whether it's a city that's doing worse or a city that's doing better. It's really, a budget is really about our priorities here, to meet our needs. Okay. Any further questions, comments? Oh, entertain a motion?
Move adoption.
Actually, you know, I need to open up the public hearing. Did we have that yet? No, we didn't. At this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Anybody like to speak on this item? Please step forward. Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move adoption of the budget.
Second. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Phan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
5B is an adoption of a resolution confirming the Garden Grove Tourism Improvement District Advisory Board Report and levying an assessment for fiscal year 2016-17, and Mr. Plodgett is here to give the presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, tonight we have for your consideration to hold a public hearing to adopt the resolution confirming the annual report for Garden Grove Tourist Improvement District for 2016-2017. The purpose of the district is to provide revenues to pay costs for advertising and marketing efforts designed to increase overnight stays in the district, also construction, maintenance, and improvements in the district, and other services and activities. Before the assessment can be made and levied, City Council must conduct a public hearing, which we're doing tonight, hear any protests, and then go ahead and make some determinations. So the first determination is, A, number one, to terminate proceedings if there's 50% written protests. Number two is to order changes in the matters provided in the annual report, or number three, adopt the resolution confirming the annual report originally as submitted. It's not anticipated the city will incur significant direct costs as a result of this action, and it's estimated that the Garden Grove Tourist Improvement District will provide $3.38 million in annual revenues for 2016-2017. And just to note, this is actually a self-assessment of 2.5% within the district that comes directly from the hotels. So at this time, it's recommended City Council conduct a public hearing and receive input from, receive the report from the city clerk regarding protests, and assuming there are no protests, adopt the resolution confirming the tourism district report, levying an assessment for 2016-2017. That concludes my report.
Great, thank you. So there's 2.5%, and then there's another assessment on another tier, is that correct?
Yes, there's two tiers, so the major tier is north of Lamson, that's the larger 2.5% tier, and then south of Lamson Avenue, which would include the Great Wood Lodge, is 0.5% assessment.
And south of Lamson, does that end at a certain point?
It does, at Garden Grove Boulevard, that would be the end of the district.
Okay, great. I'm going to open up the public hearing at this time. Anybody wishing to speak on this matter? Hearing and seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing. Any questions?
I'll move adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mayor Nguyen and Councilmembers, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to let you know that the city clerk's office did not receive any protests.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you. I also want to commend the folks that self-assess, because not only do they work to improve tourism, they also give back to our community, with the Garden Grove Community Foundation, with things like the OC Food Bank, and I think that's a very good thing. And I think oftentimes, we don't see that, and think sometimes, we think that this is a revenue stream to the city, but really, it's a self-assessment, and this is something that we have to do, to say, hey, go ahead, you can tax yourself. And it's actually helping not only the Harbor Boulevard area, but also other parts of our city as well. So I want to come in and thank the folks that are doing that. We have a second, and please vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Phan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
5C?
5C is a consideration of an ordinance approving Development Agreement Number DA 002-2016 with Tony Lamb and Jenny Doe for the construction of a four-story, 10-unit mixed-use work-live development at 10641 and 10661 Garden Grove Boulevard and 10662 Pearl Street, and the planning staff is here to give the report.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. The item before you tonight is a request to transmit a Planning Commission recommendation for City Council to adopt a mitigated negative declaration and approve a development agreement for the construction of a four-story, 10-unit work-live mixed-use development on Lamb that consists of three properties located at 10641, 10661 Garden Grove Boulevard, and 10662 Pearl Street in the adaptive reuse zone. On May 19 of 2016, the Planning Commission approved a site plan and a conditional use permit for the construction of the proposed development in conjunction with a lotline adjustment to consolidate three properties into one, and recommending City Council approval of the development agreement that's before you tonight. The proposed development agreement provides assurances that the applicant will be guaranteed four years in which to construct the project, and the city will receive from the developer a development agreement payment. The development agreement payment is designed to provide benefits to the public in return for an extended period in which to construct the project. If the development agreement is approved and becomes effective, the land use entitlement will be valid for four years, and the city will receive a development agreement payment of $19,160. If the development agreement is not approved, the land use entitlements will be valid for one year, and the city will not receive the development agreement payment. With that, the Planning Commission recommends that the City Council conduct a public hearing and introduce and conduct the first reading of an ordinance regarding Development Agreement Number DA 002-2016 for Site Plan Number SP 022-2016, Conditional Use Permit CUPO 65-2016, and Lot Line Adjustment Number LLA 11-2016. That reads as follows: An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove adopting a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program and adopt Development Agreement Number DA 002-2016 between Tony Lamb and Jenny Doe, the developers, and the City of Garden Grove, as well as authorize the city manager to execute the agreement and make minor modifications as appropriate thereto on behalf of the city if the ordinance is adopted and becomes effective. With that, staff, please leave the report and is here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? I'm going to open up the public hearing right now. Anyone wishing to speak, to speak on this item? Nope, hearing and seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing.
Just out of curiosity, is the applicant here? Or no? Is he not here? Okay. Yeah.
Are they? I think that's for another item.
What's that?
I think that's for another item.
Yeah. Well, anyways, I just wanted to monologue for a second on this one, and just say that I'm really excited about this little project. I think it's cool, because years ago, we implemented a mixed-use overlay in this area, and I've been dying to see projects come out of that, right? People to take advantage of our mixed-use code and do live-work or do something cool. And so this is a relatively small project, but I think there's opportunity for a lot of projects like this around in this area, back in kind of the old auto industrial part of town that we have, and there's a lot of unique properties that could be repurposed for cool stuff like this. So I wish these guys the best of success, and I can't wait to see it come out of the ground. And unless there's any other comments, I could make that a motion.
Go ahead. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Phan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
And there's nothing under item six. We're going to recess briefly before we go into seven. Thank you. I didn't hear anyone else speak about this item during the regular public comments. These are only two comments on this item. Great. Thank you. Seven A?
Seven A is approval of assignment of Grove District Resort Hotel Development Agreement Site C from Land &amp; Design, Inc. to Investal Garden Resorts LLC, and this is continued from the June 14th, 2016 meeting. And Mr. Blodgett is here to give the report.
Mr. Mayor?
Members of the City Council? Tonight, we have for your consideration assignment of Grove District Resort Hotel Agreement Site C from Land &amp; Design to SCG America Investal Garden Resorts LLC. This agreement was approved back, the Site C agreement was approved back in 2013, April of 2013, with Land &amp; Design. And this is to facilitate financing and construction of the project. Land &amp; Design is proposing to assign certain rights and interests in the hotel agreement to Investal Garden Resorts LLC, which is a joint venture between Land &amp; Design and SCG America. Land &amp; Design has formally requested city's approval of the proposed assignment. A little background on the SCG America. SCG America is a U.S. arm of Shanghai Construction Group, and they recently purchased the Hyatt Orange County for an all-cash transaction that closed within 30 days, and also the former Fan Diego's Restaurant, which sits right adjacent to the hotel. And they're going to look at repositioning the restaurant and also remodeling the lobby of the hotel. Also, they're building hotels in, projects in New York, Los Angeles, and Orange County. And a major project they're building in New York is SCG America Plaza One, which is a 33,000-square-foot mixed-use project anchored by Hyatt Place Hotel and mixed-use residential and retail on the bottom floors. They're also looking at building in construction mode on SCG America Plaza Two in Fleshy, New York, and this is 1.4 million square feet of new development. It also includes residential hotel and a mixed-use concept. And here are some photos of that New York project along the riverfront. They're also starting construction on America, SCG America Broadway and Fourth, which is in downtown Los Angeles. This is a 450-unit condominium unit project that's going to get started in the next couple of months. So this project, as far as the community benefits to the city, it's estimated this agreement will generate net new annual revenues to the city between 2.1 million and 2.5 million in new tax revenue, and this includes sales tax, property tax, and hotel tax. Also, this development will generate approximately 750 to 1,025 new construction jobs and permanent jobs. SCG has an excellent track record of experience and expertise of new hotel development, and a review of their financials concluded SCG is a well-capitalized company with a financial wherewithal to complete the Site C development. So staff is recommending approval of the assignment agreement Grove District Resort Hotel Agreement from Land &amp; Design, Inc. to Investal Garden Resorts pursuant to the attached assignment and assumption agreement, and authorize the city manager to execute the consent of the city to the assignment on the city's behalf, and also authorize city manager to amend the agreement on behalf of the city as specified in the attached letter agreement. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Colleagues? Mr. Bowie?
I, Councilmember Bowie, can I chime in?
Yes. Mr. Bowie, come on.
I really would like to thank you, my colleagues, for allowing me, allowing us two weeks to do my diligence and understand what going on with this big project, big and complex project. I met with SCG and Land Design on Friday, the 17th, and I'm very glad that I had that opportunity. SCG, both SCG and Land &amp; Design have assured us that they are committed to be a partners with our city, not just a company with lots of money that want to invest in our city, but they do want to be a partner with our residents, and that community input will be a very high priority on their pledge, so that they will work with our community to make sure that the, this hotel development will be something that Garden Grove residents will be happy with. And I also had to take a look at the company track records, and with that, I am very happy to, you know, throw my support in with this project, and with that, I would like to make a motion to, you know, to move this.
Is there a second?
We lost him.
Well, we heard the motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Is there further discussion?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just add that it's a great project for the city. However, if we could, SCG asked that in the future, you could think about our community more as far as perhaps when you have your hotels built, perhaps the residents can have some sort of benefit, some sort of plus for being a part of the city. I'm somewhat disappointed with past projects where basically our residents kind of were not considered as much, and so I fully support what we're doing. However, I just ask in the future, we consider perhaps giving some benefit to our residents. That's all I have.
I definitely echo your thoughts, Mr. Phan. You know, when I look at the agreement, which was signed in 2013, is that correct? In 2013. You know, personally, I don't think that, you know, I would agree with such, such a contract if it was signed today. But it has been in motion, and I think that the market has certainly changed quite a bit, particularly for that site. And I think in addition to, you know, things like prevailing wage law, which is the law, I hope that our city in the future, when considering these kinds of development agreements, that we will look at project labor agreements, that we will look at community benefits agreements, and partnerships with supporting, you know, the nonprofits in our city. You know, our Strawberry Festival had such great success this year, but there's a lot of opportunity to connect with the private sector and those that are wishing to invest in our community as well. So I think that as we look forward into the future, we should definitely consider that, those things as components to development agreements. But on the other, on the other hand, we are seeing jobs here in our city with this new development, as we've seen with Great Wolf as well, and that's an important thing for our community. In addition to the tax revenue, I know that personally, I don't necessarily agree with the tax share agreement. Certainly, the net amount is not the actual amount because of the tax share agreement, but I think, I think that component definitely needs to be fleshed out, and the public should definitely have an opportunity to hear and to speak on those items. And ideally, in the future, we would have a greater transparency to allow the public to comment on that and hopefully have a better deal, because the dynamics are different in this, in this time. It's changed quite a bit since 2013. But with that, I'm going to call for the vote.
Move to approve? We had a motion by Councilmember Bowie, and it was seconded by? Who seconded it? I did.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Jones.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Phan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Yes.
And Mayor Nguyen?
Yes.
Seven B?
Item seven B is an approval of an agreement with West Coast Arboris, Inc., RFP number S1188 for tree maintenance services. And Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you. Ms. Palmeri? Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, the council is being asked to order contract to West Coast Arboris for routine tree maintenance services. The city currently enjoys about 19,000 trees that the Public Works Department is responsible for maintaining. Recently, the state determined that tree trimming workers on Public Works contracts are now subject to prevailing wage laws. This has resulted in an increased cost of 33% to doing work for tree trimming. In order to accommodate the cost increase within the proposed Public Works budget, the scope of the tree trimming work will need to be cut a corresponding amount. What this means is our normal tree trimming schedule, which varies from two to four years, depending on tree species, will need to be increased to an estimated three to five years. Staff believes this will impact our residents who expect the city to maintain its trees within the established schedule. Staff will do our best with the resources we have to provide the residents with their expected services. However, it would be safe to assume that council should expect the public to express some concerns regarding this issue. Staff received and opened three proposals on May 4th of this year, and determined that West Coast Arboris had the highest rated proposal with competitive pricing. The winning bid was about $430,000. However, staff was able to negotiate the contract down to $290,000, which is the department budget for this service. Should the council decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can continue working for the city after the current contract expires in October. for the city after the current contract expires in October. The total contract amount will be for 1,450,000 for a period of three years. This service is included in next year's Public Works Department budget and will be paid for with general funds. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Any questions for staff, colleagues? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it. Second.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Yes.
And Mayor Wynn?
Yes.
7C?
7C is a word of contract to Penko Engineering, Inc., for on-call engineering and engineering staff services, and Mr. Murray is here to give the staff report.
Thank you again, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, council is being asked to award a contract to Penko Engineering for on-call engineering services and engineering staff services. Currently, the Public Works Department is down one engineer due to a recent retirement. While the city is actively recruiting for another engineer, there are a few sensitive projects that must proceed at this time. Specifically, these projects are the remodeling of the council chambers for the additional council members, remodeling of the police department lobby, construction of a new fire station, number six, at West Haven Park, and the reconstruction of the park facilities at West Haven Park that will be impacted by the fire station construction. Staff received and opened three proposals earlier this month and determined that Harrison Associates has the highest rated proposal with a competitive price structure. The contract will total $500,000 over a period of three years. However, once a staff engineer is hired, the contract usage will be reduced significantly, if not at all discontinued. Should the council decide to award the contract tonight, the contract engineer can begin work immediately on the stated projects. This contract will be paid for out of the funding for each specific project without increasing the impact of the general fund. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
When do you expect to hire that, that person?
We're currently reviewing rated applicants right now, so we're hoping, with any luck whatsoever, they should be here within a few months.
Okay, great. I'll entertain a motion.
Move it. Second.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Fan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Yes.
And Mayor Wynn?
Yes.
7E. Oh, hang on a second, 7D.
We did 7D?
No, we had to do it again.
Okay.
For council, we did it earlier.
Okay. Item 7D is a joint item with the Garden Grove Sanitary District. It's a word of contract to Mamco, Inc., for City Project Number 7405 and Sanitary District Project Number 7834 and 7837 East Garden Grove Storm Drain and Sewer Improvements.
We don't need a report. I'll entertain a motion.
Move it. Second.
Please vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie? Councilmember Fan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Yes.
And Mayor Wynn?
Yes.
7E.
7E is a consideration of an ordinance for the paramedic tax override rate for fiscal year 2016-17, and this is the first introduction of the ordinance. It's an ordinance of the city council, the city of Garden Grove, establishing the amount of money for paramedic services that must be raised by an ad valorem tax override and the setting of the tax rate of set override. And Mr. Kingsley, Kingsley Okoreki is here to give the report.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, council members, in June 1974, over 60% of the Garden Grove residents' voters approved the paramedic tax override to help fund the ongoing cost of emergency medical care service, paramedic service to the community. The paramedic property tax override, as order indebtedness, has been set by the city council and levied by the county or the town controller office since fiscal year 1978, 79. And in order to maintain and continue to pay for the paramedic emergency medical services, it is necessary to continue to generate revenue through the use of this tax override on the taxable properties within the city of Garden Grove. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council adopt their tax ordinance authorizing property tax override of seven cents per $100 of full assessed value, specifically for the 2016-17 fiscal year paramedic program. The total revenue anticipated as a result is approximately $8.8 million, and that will be used to maintain and pay for the emergency medical care services, otherwise known as paramedic services. And it's our recommendation that city council conduct the first reading and introduce the ordinance establishing the paramedic tax override for fiscal year 2016-17 at seven cents per $100 of full assessed value. And that concludes our report, and staff can answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Jones?
Couple of questions. This is the one where it's, it's at seven cents, but there's flexibility to go up to 10 cents or something, right? And it's, so we've always kind of operated within it. Can we get some commentary maybe from the chief on where do we stand in terms of cost recovery and that kind of stuff within this?
Certainly. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council members. If I could, if I could give you a very quick overview on the services that we currently provide, is the resolution before you is a status quo as far as the same level of services that we've seen in the years before, actually the paramedic services established back in 1985. Currently, what the city has served with was what we call three full paramedic units, which are three pieces of equipment that are staffed with two paramedics. We have four paramedic assessment units, which is staffed with one paramedic. That one paramedic arrives at the scene, stabilizes the incident, and then waits for the arrival of a full paramedic unit with the two paramedics, then in turn to continue treatment and transport to the hospital. In the city, we still have two basic life support units, which is our truck company and our engine one that sits at our station one, that just has the capability for first aid. Currently, in the ordinance, the target time configuration is we'd like to get there within five minutes of our delivery service of a paramedic. Currently, where we're at with our performance standards is that we're only able to get there 38% of the time within six minutes. And the really, the reason that has occurred is since we have, as the city has grown, the population has grown, and the call volume has grown, our delivery model hasn't changed. Just in the last four years, we are up over 3,000 calls from where we were before, which is pretty much the standard throughout the county, and many cities are suffering with the same thing we are, but our volume has definitely exceeded our capacity to provide that time constraint of that five minutes. So where we're at right now is, ideally, we'd like to incrementally increase the amount of paramedics we have so that we can pull down that timeline. If we increase by three paramedics, we could shave 30 seconds off of our response time citywide and increase overall performance by 10%. So that just gives you a kind of a snapshot of a small, a small incremental change could make a significant impact citywide. The area that, right now, we feel as the statistically has the greatest need is in the resort area, our Station Six, ironically where we're building our new station, the demand of the resort area and that community in our current configuration is where we'd need to put the next full paramedic unit if, if we could in the future. So obviously, my recommendation as fire chief would to work towards that means incrementally to increase the number of paramedics so that we could citywide improve our overall delivery.
To quantify that, how, how small of an incremental change would, would get you to where you think you need to be?
I believe that we could definitely move in the right direction by three additional paramedics, and they would be assigned to Station Six. The cost of the three paramedics right now, today's number, is, is about $360,000 for the three paramedics, but that would be, the current assessment only covers the status quo, so that would be in addition to what the current assessment is.
This is a status...
It'd be a nominal increase, though, if you, percentage-wise.
Okay. How much? Any idea? Kingsley, or whoever?
Well, I'm not particularly sure what the additional percentage increase to cover that, if it's $360,000, that we need to increase it, maybe a few points beyond the seven cents, I don't know, to eight cents or less than that. But the 360, again, is a, you know, if you look at it, it's a static number analysis today, you know, the same, what we talked about earlier in terms of cost of public safety is that, you know, they do increase over time. So, you know, if you're increasing the override tax just to accommodate that static number in a year or so, that number will, needs to be adjusted again. So I, you know, the analysis, you know, I haven't really done any in-depth analysis on it. I would prefer to take some time and analyze it and make a financially sound recommendation.
When we were going through the, oh, can I keep going for a minute? Sorry, Fat, can I?
Go ahead, I'll call on you, Mr. Bowie.
When we were going through the budget, I was looking at this, and you had it in the same kind of category where we had property tax. Obviously, property tax revenues increases. Property valuations go up, but they're capped, I think, by Prop 13, so you, you kind of see that pegged. Even if properties go up 4% or 5%, we'll see property tax revenues pegged at 2% per year. This was the next line item, and it only goes up 1.15%. Does it not par with property tax increase, or is it a different calculation?
Well, it's not a different...
I guess the core I'm getting at is, is there a propensity that this, this revenue increases if property values increase by more than conservative expectations or something over the next year, for example?
Yeah, as property tax increases, this revenue will increase, you know, and I'm not sure if it's the same percentage, but we look at, if you look at the projections that we've made based on, you know, what our consultant is telling us and also from history, in some years, it increases faster than the property tax, and some years not. I'm not sure what makes that difference. You would think that a decrease in tandem, but we fully expect that this revenue will increase, assuming property taxes increase down the road. And the other component here, too, is that, which is why I'm saying I'm needing more time to do some analysis here, I was just speaking to our fiscal consultant, who's looking at our redevelopment trust fund, and as some of those things on the ROPs fall off, the city gets residual allocations of property tax as well as residual allocations to paramedic tax. So, you know, we may look at next year and see that, or the following year, that, you know, paramedic tax, even at the current 7% rate, you know, we may realize more revenue out of it, and it may not be necessary to raise, you know, and at the same time, be able to accommodate some incremental growth in our, in our paramedic program. So, yeah, that's essentially why, you know, my recommendation is that I would take some time, look at it, and come back, working with the chief, to see how we can incrementally, you know, implement some of the ideas that he has to increase the efficiency of this paramedic service delivery.
And I ask because this stood out as one of these opportunities where, when you look at it, I mean, the, the assessment should be, there should be a nexus between the assessment and the cost of service actually being provided. So if we're negative on that, then, and we're within a range, then, I wouldn't be opposed to taking a look at making it whole.
Councilman, if I could add in, although I don't want to jump ahead of Councilman Bowie, if he wanted to, if he had a question for me, but I was, I was going to just mention, you know, as we're talking about this, you know, we're not talking about enhancements to our existing basic services. We're, these are basic paramedic services we're trying to keep pace with. So the way it's structured, we can't, nor should we really ever exceed the amount of money that we're collecting than what we really need. So we're trying to, we're trying to maintain the baseline services that were approved back when, you know, back when it was originally envisioned. EMS runs are increasing. As the chief indicated, we're not quite meeting our benchmarks that we'd like to meet in providing services to the community. I think the original paramedic assessment was in '78. I don't know if we've had an increase since 1985, but, you know, we feel with some modest, you know, structuring of the department, we could make a significant difference, but as Kingsley said, we want to, if we did have a modest change to the assessment, again, I'm using it, saying modest, a modest change, we want to, we want to use the right amount because, you know, you don't want to come back to this, you know, for a good period of time. You want to, you want to hit the right mark, so, you know, we could easily provide some analysis to you. I think the chief's already done some work on this, as has, you know, in talking to Kingsley as well, so I think we could come back to you, you know, fairly, in a fairly reasonable amount of time with some thoughts on this.
Thank you. Mr. Bowie?
Chief, with the, echo back, with the aging population that are growing, growing every year, I believe that every symptom that we can say is very critical, Spanish people who have stroke. In your experience, do you think that the seven cents per 100 would give you enough resource to provide timely response to the, to the people who are in emergency, people who have stroke?
Well, thank you for that question, Councilman, and yes, the, this, this incremental increase will do exactly that. It takes 30 seconds off of our response time citywide, so this one change has impacted citywide. It, in our fractile measurement, improves our response time, and then in turn makes up that difference, the time difference, which is critically important for us. We, we need to have that paramedic at that doorstep within six minutes to intervene with all the major health concerns, such as stroke, heart attack, or any of those. So that would move us in the right direction, and I think incrementally, you're going to get a lot of bang for your dollar by this approach, by standing up one additional full paramedic unit for a total of four within the city. That combined with our current paramedic assessment units that can get there and stabilize things, you have a system that will be fairly efficient and definitely meet the needs of the community for several years, pending, you know, a lot of more calls or things out of our control like that, but it would definitely get us to where we need to be. My concern is I just don't want to wait, as, as the city manager said, too long before we take some sort of action, because we are already in the time penalty side of this, where we're not making our time standards, which is, which I'm concerned with that respect.
And closely, how would it take on average for a paramedic respond to people who have stroke or heart attack?
Currently, our paramedic response, our full paramedic unit responses, is that we are able to get a full paramedic unit to a front door of a person's house 38% of the time. That's a very low fractile measurement. We are able to put a Garden Grove Fire Department resource, whether it's a BLS or a paramedic assessment unit, to someone's front door 68% of the time within six minutes. So we're getting that first due company there better, but the, the industry standard is a 90% fractile measurement. I would sure be a lot happier if we were in the 80%. You know, we're fairly low on our fractile measurement performance standards, so I'm trying to use the analytical tools to, you know, to give you guys advice as far as how we move forward with this, but it would make a huge difference in getting something there quicker.
Well, with, with a couple friends that of mine died of a stroke in the last two years, I certainly would like to see the number going up from 38% to something, you know, around 80% if we do it. How would we help you achieving that number?
Well, I think that that 80% number would be an excellent target. It would require us to probably have an additional three paramedics in addition to the three that I recommend right now incrementally, and then we're going to move towards the 78% tile, which is probably the highest number we'll be able to achieve with the number of fire stations we have. At some point, we, we geographically don't have enough resources, but by putting two paramedics on the resources we have, we can hit that 78 percentile, which is basically our maximum capability, which I'd be very confident saying that's the best that we could provide in the city with. So I'm looking for a total of six, but incrementally, I think we could start with three and then move towards that based on some, you know, economic... move towards that, um, based on some, you know, economic markers and stuff like that.
I, I, I think, I think we'd all like to see that, especially as our population is aging in our city. You, you mentioned earlier that there's been increasing calls in our resort area. Is that Station Six?
Yeah, Station Six, uh, it, it's, it is the resort area, but there's also just the, the community in that area itself. Um, there's probably a connection between, you know, the resort area and the community itself, but we do not have a full paramedic unit there. So what it does is it generates the first due company to arrive to provide that initial care and then a full paramedic unit to respond from another part of the city to follow up and do that call continuation. So actually, you're sending two pieces of equipment to where you could just send one if you actually had two paramedics on it. So a lot of this is creating a greater deal of efficiency, which increases citywide, uh, time performance.
Right, that makes sense. I, I'm curious, uh, the increase in Station Six, what is the percentage of calls from folks who are tourists or who are staying at hotels versus residents?
I, I don't have that exact data right now. Um, if you are a, uh, not a resident of the community, you are, you are billed for the paramedic services. So they would provide, they would be doing payment for that paramedic service, but I don't have the exact statistical number on that.
Mm-hmm.
I could certainly get it for you, though.
Please, yeah, I'd like to see that. Okay, so you're going to come back, staff, Mr. Manager, with more data for us? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we can certainly, um, we've got the basics of a report already, sort of, uh, trying to put some information together so we can certainly, uh, get that together for you probably by the next council meeting.
Okay, then, in that.
But we do recommend that you introduce the ordinance today and adopt it at your next meeting because of the time crunch. We need to provide a copy of this to the county in time to make it on the tax rolls.
Right.
I see, I see. Okay, and we have waived the reading already? In that case, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I'll move it. Second.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Beard.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yes.
Councilmember Fan.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones.
Yes.
And Mayor Wen.
Yes. Moving on to seven F.
Seven F is a consideration of a resolution adopting Omar Sandoval as city attorney.
Okay. So this is from Councilmember Fan's request on July fourteenth.
Is there any staff report or just basically, I just talk about it?
You know, it's, it's your, it's your item, Mr. Fan.
Um, I wanted to also ask if I may, as far as the current situation with, uh, Mr. Sandoval's, uh, firm, um, do we have a contract in place with them? Is it an at-will, uh, contract or is it a yearly contract? Can you talk to him more about that, Scott?
Sure, Councilman, uh, it's my understanding, and I think the acting city attorney can confirm this with me, but there is not a contract that we have in place with the firm right now. There's, so there's no expiration. Um, the city attorney, uh, obviously works directly for the city council, just as I do, and, um, so there's no expiration on that contract.
Okay, um, so there'd be no contract, uh, even if we were to take the title of acting outside of, away from him and just put him as city attorney? Does that change as far as anything, as far as the bottom line, that we have to pay as far as salary, as far as anything in that regard? Or how soon we can go and get an RFP for possibly a, uh, new law firm if we wanted to?
Uh, Councilman, uh, from, as far as I understand, it, it doesn't change anything statutorily or, you know, legally. It's, it's sort of a, a, a name issue only. Council can still certainly, uh, choose to do anything they want with an RFP at any point in time. And, um, so it's, 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 it's really, you know, a decision of the council.
Right. And colleagues, that's the reason why I made this, uh, request put on the agenda and asked for the acting to be removed because in my experience in the military, when you have an acting before a name, you're a placeholder. And basically, you're, uh, basically filling a space of somebody who's more superior. And in my experience with Mr. Omar, uh, Mr. Sandoval, the last, uh, six months plus or so, I think he's very well qualified. And so that's the reason why, and if there's no reason, uh, to have the word acting from his title, I would recommend and ask that we, uh, make him our city manager, I mean, our city attorney. Um, and then if and when we, sorry, Scott didn't want to take you away like that. Um, if and when we wish to go out for a bid or to get a better deal for, um, you know, our offer for the city to be a city attorney, we can do that without any problem. So that's what I ask for us to do.
You know, I, I think this would be a good opportunity to, uh, open up for RFP. Uh, you know, we go out to bid for all city services and I think that, uh, it would only be prudent, uh, that we act, uh, in, in, in good faith, uh, that the public has entrusted us with to, uh, make sure that we are, are providing what's best for the city. And I, I agree, Mr. Sandoval is very well qualified. And I, I remember that when I first came on to this council as mayor and, uh, we, we transitioned after Mr. Nixon had resigned, we transitioned to Mr. Sandoval. Uh, you know, folks came up to me and said, you know, you just have to, uh, get to know Mr. Sandoval. You know, he's a really great guy. And I agree. I got to know Mr. Sandoval. He is a great guy. But that's not my job as an elected official. My job is to make sure that we have a process. And I am very reluctant to make this appointment or to join you in making this appointment if we don't have a process for the public, uh, to at least see what is available. I'm not saying that we should ask Mr. Sandoval to write the RFP, which would by law exclude him and his firm from submitting a proposal. I'm saying we should see what's out there in comparison. No offense whatsoever to Mr. Sandoval. You're a great guy. You've done a great job. But that's not the point. The point is there are processes in government that assures the public that we are doing our due diligence. And by making the appointment without a process, I'm afraid that we would set precedent for not only this council, but possibly future councils to take those kinds of actions without due diligence and a process. That's my only input.
So at this time, we have that on the agenda. I would ask, uh, to have a motion be made for, uh, appointing Mr. Omar Sandoval as our city attorney.
I'll second that.
Was that a motion?
Yes, I would make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Beard.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yes.
Councilmember Fan.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones.
Yes.
And Mayor Wen.
No.
Motion received. Four yes votes and Mayor Wen voting no.
Seven G, I brought that up as well, Mr. Mayor. The reason is because, um, with, as you know, it's been forty-plus years since we had an increase to salary for council. And I understand with our hardship and our budget that we have and the fact that we haven't given any raises to our, our employees, it would, I think would be, um, sending a bad signal to everybody if we were to vote to increase our own salary as well in this hardship and, and a hard time. But at the same time, I realize that, you know, in order to have high-quality candidates, quality, qualified people to sit on this dais, we can't burden them with, uh, costs and, you know, how much it costs to run a campaign and stuff like that. And when you're on the dais, you actually do a lot of stuff beyond just at these meetings that could take a toll on, uh, you know, gas expenditures, your vehicle, stuff like that. So I asked staff to look into, uh, options that we may have to help out with the cost involved in, uh, this, this position. And so I would ask, uh, this council to support a, uh, motion and approve an increase, uh, not increase, but a two-hundred-dollar, uh, vehicle stipend, uh, to help out with that cost, not to take effect for this council here, uh, nor this, uh, budget cycle, but for the next council and only taking effect, um, for the next budget, uh, session, to make sure that we have enough time for staff and everybody to allocate those extra funding, uh, for it to happen. So I would ask for your support, uh, for that, making a two-hundred-dollar, uh, increase for each council member for a vehicle stipend.
You're saying that would go into effect July first, two thousand seventeen?
Correct.
If I mentioned that correctly?
Yes.
Two hundred dollars per month.
I have a question for our attorney.
Go ahead, Mr. Bowie.
Um, since Councilman Chris Beard and I, uh, still be on the council for the next two years, uh, are we allowed to vote at least?
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember, you are allowed to vote, uh, and vehicle stipends are specifically authorized under the government code.
Do you feel comfortable voting for this, Mr. Bowie?
Um, that's fine.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
So I made a motion this time to establish a, a vehicle stipend of two hundred dollars for members of this, our city council, starting, uh, for the next budget cycle of July first, two thousand seventeen. May I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there further discussion?
My, my only issue for me being on the council, I, I really have a hard time voting on something that affects me personally.
Yeah.
Uh, with, with money and the structural deficit and everything like that, so, um, uh, I'm gonna, at this time, I like to just vote no on for that reason, because it does affect me. And so I understand the, um, the reasoning behind it and I know we put in a lot of time and a lot of miles and generally, as a cost reimbursement, I'm just speaking generally on it, it would be justifiable, but, but I'm in this situation, I know, I don't feel good about voting on something that affects me personally. So with that, I'm, I'm going to vote no on the motion.
If I may respond to that, I appreciate what you're, you're saying too. And that, I think, is the reason why we waited forty years to make this happen, because no one wants to pull the trigger. So I hope that in the, the future, we make it easier for the council members to where we bring it up as a matter of a staff or a report every two or three years as a matter of course, instead of just basically just let it ride and then get to the point where we realize that, uh, we are way behind the ball when it comes to compensation and that type of thing. But I definitely appreciate what you're saying, Chris.
Okay, so this is a vehicle stipend. What is the, the, uh, compensation in, in other councils? Do they have a vehicle stipend? What is the?
Uh, the attachment to the report, page five oh eight, has a list of the Orange County cities that currently have a council stipend for vehicle allowance.
We did a, uh, miss, uh, Miss Stipe did a quick survey of four or five other cities surrounding us and, uh, you know, found that there were stipends between two-hundred-and-twenty-three to seven-hundred-plus dollars a month and so, um...
On two-hundred, if we adopted that, that would be the lowest.
We, yeah, right.
And I'm not mistaken, too, that the stipend that you're referring to is in addition to any compensation that the other council members may have been receiving as well too, correct?
That's possible, yes.
I, I think that would be accurate. Uh, Buena Park, what is their council stipend? Not the vehicle.
Yeah, the salary.
Yeah, salary.
I remember seeing the numbers, but I, unfortunately, I don't specifically recollect.
Okay, I'm just curious. All right, so any further discussion on this? Don't want to spend too much time on this. It's the end of the night, okay, let's call for a vote.
Councilmember Beard.
No.
Councilmember Bowie.
No.
Councilmember Fan.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones.
Yes.
And Mayor Wen.
For the future councils, yes.
The motion did pass, three to two, with Councilmembers Beard and Councilmember Bowie voting no.
That was good, that worked out, right? That worked out. Okay. I have some matters, uh, we're in eight now. I'd like to go dark on, uh, July twenty-sixth. I know we are going dark on August twenty-third. I know that, um, Mr. Styles won't be here, but I won't be here either, and if it's okay with the rest of the council. Uh, we're, I discussed this with, uh, our, our manager already. And any input?
I'm okay with that. Did we, uh, we discussed this briefly as well, is there, uh, doesn't sound like there's anything pressing that would come up in that timeframe that we would be?
This was our big meeting tonight.
Right.
Yeah, most important meeting.
Right, I'm not aware of anything on the horizon that that would, that would get sideways over going dark for a meeting.
We would, we would still have the first meeting in August and so we would, you know, we would definitely need that. So we would, we'd have the staff all kind of work towards, you know, any resolutions, contracts, anything we, we get going.
And just for your edification, Mayor, and everybody else, I'll be on military duties the whole month of August. And so I'll be in Hawaii like Councilman Bowie, but doing a little more work, I hope. Um, but, uh, so even though we'll be, I'll be absent the second week of August, if need be, I hope to Skype in like he has.
I'd like to point out that Councilmember Bowie is working right now, even though he's in Hawaii, so we gotta give him credit for that.
My apologies.
Would the military allow you to do that?
What's that?
Would the military, would the Navy allow you to Skype?
Well, that would make me work earlier, so I'll have to report in at five in the morning instead of eight in the morning. Mr. Beard.
I have a, um, I will be gone the first meeting in August, August ninth, um, and you won't be here August as well, so it'll be possibly only three of you on that council meeting. I'll be in, in transit. Um, my wife and I are taking a Mediterranean cruise for our twenty-fifth wedding anniversary, so I will literally be traveling and cannot, will not have access to any technological means of being a part of the council meeting, so I'll be indisposed on that time.
Okay, so that was the first meeting in August, you said? That would be August ninth? Okay. Uh, and Mr. Fan, you may be gone? You are gone.
I will be gone, but can be available via Skype if need be.
Okay, get ready for that, gentlemen. I think, I think our IT folks did a great job tonight, having Mr. Bowie here with us. It definitely feels like he's here with us too, because he's very engaged and I do appreciate that. So, okay, that would be one, two, three. I think, I think we're good there. So do I need a motion? I do, right? To agendize for the next meeting, uh, going dark on?
You actually don't need to.
No?
You, you actually don't need to agendize because that's a scheduling.
Okay.
And scheduling under the Brown Act doesn't require it to be agendized.
Okay, so we just won't post for that?
Correct.
Okay, great.
No, we, we'll, we'll post a notice of cancellation.
Okay, good.
There won't be any quorum anyway.
Okay, perfect. I'm learning so much from our new city attorney. All right, folks, and I have one more matter. Uh, the cannabis task force, uh, we haven't convened in a while and, and I, I just wanted to, uh, let everybody know that, uh, personally, I haven't discussed this with Mr. Bowie, but personally, I think that we should give it a vote, an up or a down, uh, on, on, on the taxing element that was proposed and which was what brought forward, uh, the four-one vote to have the task force. So I, I think there needs to be some... to have the task force. So I think there needs to be some kind of closure there. So, and also, there's the deadline as well. Mr. Sandoval, when is that deadline to get, if we are to have a tax measure on the November ballot, what is the deadline?
The deadline would be August 12th, but your council meeting, it would be the council meeting of August 9th.
Okay. So when do you recommend we agendize that for, just for a vote?
July 12th would be basically your next meeting.
The next meeting, okay. Then, then I think that we need to agendize that for a vote. Is that okay, everybody?
I won't be here.
You won't be here? Okay. Well, you're going to vote no anyway, right?
No, July 12th.
12th, yeah, I'll be here, okay. Well, you know what, if we're bringing up, is this an agendized matter, I would like to give consideration to just cease with the task force. I think it served its purpose with providing information. So, well, with that, if we can include that in the motion as an action item for that agenda.
Sure, we can take that action if we choose. I would take that as a second to my motion, and that being an amendment to my motion. Please vote.
Councilmember Beard.
Yes.
Would you repeat the, the-
Yeah, sure. So basically, the motion is to agendize an item so we can take action on discontinuing the task force and/or having a tax measure on the November ballot.
Two separate items?
They can-
It can be one.
One thing, because-
It's related to the task force.
Yeah.
So agendize what?
Depending on whatever the motion, so we have to have a discussion. So we have to decide whether we want that taxing element, because that's the deadline, or we want to disband. And if, we can't do that unless we have the item on the agenda. Does that make sense?
Yes, I agree. We need to bring closure to this. We need to either, you know, terminate the task force while we move forward. We cannot just, you know, put something in the limbo here.
Yes, that's why-
I think it's important to vote, yes, let abolish it, or, you know, yes, let, let move on.
Great. Thank you for your agreement. We'll have that item on the next agenda after we vote, and see if it will be agendized. Please vote.
Councilmember Beard.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie.
Yes.
Councilmember Finn.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones.
Yes.
And Mayor Wen.
Yes. Thank you, colleagues. Others? Other items, matters?
I just would like to-
Can I hang on, Mr. Bowie? Just one second. But please don't take that call. Mr. Beard.
I just want to wish everybody a safe and happy Fourth of July, which is coming up, and remind everyone of the restriction of illegal fireworks. And so I'm assuming we're going to step up all enforcement and every, all activities we can do as a city to continue to monitor and keep, keep in check illegal fireworks.
Mr. Bowie.
Two things I would like to thank you, IT staff, for doing a marvelous job, you know, technology at work here, and allowing me an opportunity to do my duties. And also wishing everyone a happy Fourth of July. Please keep a lookout for, you know, for dogs and cats. They are very prone to, you know, fireworks.
Mr. Finn.
Yes, happy Fourth to everybody. Make sure that you keep your eyes and ears out for illegal fireworks. I noticed some around my neighborhood were shooting off fireworks early, and so that was a little disturbing, you know, for us not to be on the Fourth, and they're shooting it off already. So please feel free to make sure you inform the public safety folks if you see or hear anything about that. But be safe.
Mr. Jones.
Happy Fourth of July to everyone, and congratulations to all of us on a, on a good night tonight. We got through our budget.
We did.
Without a hitch. That's a very big deal. We also approved the single biggest project in the history of the city, which I'm hugely excited about, and can't wait to see that go forward, so.
Thank you.
Good night. It was a good night.
Thank you. You know, before I comment, Mr. Styles?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I, I too wanted to join in on wishing everybody a happy Fourth of, happy July 4th. We will have, just a reminder for anyone who's watching, we will have two fire arson investigation investigators on duty during the July 4th looking out for illegal fireworks. I'm told by our staff that only, you know, there's only certain fireworks that, you know, that people should be using in the city. We want people to pay attention to that. State Fire Marshal rated, you know, pyrotechnics are the only allowed ones to be used. We do things like water our parks for, you know, safety and, you know, to prevent stuff from catching on fire, people coming into the parks to shoot off fireworks. So we just want people to really pay attention to that, to be safe. We're not looking to give $1,000 fines to, to, to people, but if they are, you know, if they are involved, you know, we're, you know, we want to make that point for people not to, to have that happen. I also wanted to thank the folks on and around, Rod, everybody in the IT department for, they've been working on this for a good bit all day today and coordinating with Councilman Bowie. And he's come through really clearly on the Skype interview. It's been really easy to hear him, and we can see him on the, on the laptop. So that's, that's all really good. And what I would suggest, we really did this because this was important, getting the budget passed today, and I know it was important to Councilman Bowie. I'd really, you know, encourage council members, if you're on vacation or whatever, be on vacation. Don't worry of, you know, unless there's something really critical, because there was a lot of work that went into doing this. And, you know, if we're doing it all the time, we have to think about some different procedures, I think. So, you know, when I talked to the city attorney, it's only been done a few times among even other cities around us, so.
So we shouldn't test it out with all of us?
I'm glad it worked out. And just one other thing I wanted to mention, one other thing, Community Services really did a great job with our birthday party, coordinating with all of our other city departments. And I concur with a couple of the comments that were made earlier. We had great coordination. It was a great event. It was a, it was a fun day. And on a personal note, I'm happy to participate in my, getting my first budget approved as a truly appointed city manager. I've done this once before, but it was in an interim capacity as an interim city manager. So today's my first budget as a, as a full-fledged city manager, so.
Congratulations.
It's been a pleasure to work with all of you on council. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Styles. Yes, you've done a great job so far. And this is your first Fourth of July in Garden Grove?
Yes.
Okay, welcome. I hope you and your family have an amazing Fourth, and all of our family and residents in Garden Grove an amazing Independence Day. I am also, actually, I do have a question on the audit that we voted on. What's the status of that, the Barlac?
Mr. Mayor, I've had, I've had a conversation with the person conducting the audit yesterday. She is conducting, collecting data, and we've been doing that. She did get, she, she did get delayed by two or three weeks because of some personal issues, but she is working on it. We just talked yesterday. She's, I think, will be able to complete her work pretty expeditiously. So I would, you know, I think in, before the end of July, I'll have something to you.
Okay, great, great. Thank you for that update. And we're going to end on a sad note tonight. We're going to close our meeting tonight in memory of Cynthia Lee Butterfield, 56, Garden Grove. She passed away unexpectedly on June 21st, and she's survived by her daughter Haley Butterfield, her mother Lee Butterfield, brothers Silas Butterfield and Ken Butterfield, with wife Michelle and sisters Mary Warren, Catherine Myers, and husband Bill, along with many nieces and nephews. We offer our condolences to the family.